Okay, good evening. Welcome to the seven o'clock July 7 regular city council meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge Allegiance led by Councilmember Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the roll.
Bochum?
Here.
Goodlow?
Here.
Lowpuss?
Here.
Elliott?
Here.
Miller?
Comer?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Okay, proclamations are posted and signed, and we move on to approval of the agenda. So again, just by our rules, let's make sure nobody has any desired changes on the consent agenda before we approve the agenda. Are there any... Okay, hearing none, then we are going to consider an amended agenda. So the amendments, in case you have an old copy, on page five of the packet, item nine F was deleted, and in its place, nine G became nine F. So the resolution establishing a long-term temporary position to assist with ERP implementation was not being considered tonight and is off the agenda. And then the old nine G became nine F, and then there's some page number changes as that was taken out. So that's the agenda that we are potentially considering.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the agenda as amended. I'll second.
We have a motion second to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I two of vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I two of vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Item six A is a presentation by Kiddehass County Hospital District One for a levy. There will be an opportunity for public comment. And this... No, there's no page.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight about the levy that the hospital district is running this August 5th. I have a little presentation here, but also speak to speak to the stuff going on here. So root in our past, growing for our future is kind of the foundation of our levy. So everything that we are and have been up to this point, and and just what we're looking ahead for the future for Kiddehass Valley as far as health care in our community and serving our community, and really to keep care local where we can and where it makes sense. So the health care dynamic across the country, across the state, and even in our county is getting further and further strained every day. And this is just an awesome opportunity for our community to really come together and look for an opportunity to invest locally through a levy and through our health care. Kiddehass Valley Healthcare, we are a public hospital district. We are one of many public hospital districts in the state, but we are one of only two that do not have a have a levy to the constituents of the county. The other hospital district that doesn't is very unique. It's because they actually serve residents mostly that live outside of their jurisdiction. So outside of that, KVH is proud to be completely 100% financially stable on their own for 61 years. It's just an awesome thing that we are very proud to to have that up to this point. We have hit a point where we are looking, we're obviously going to levy constituents of of Kiddehass County to to look for support and resources to really take KVH to that next level, to keep care local and to keep the high-quality care that we have here. We are seeing around around the state other closures and things happening, and KVH is not insulated to any of that. And these are things due to just changes in the economic environment that continually change over and over. So the latest one, we just saw the University of Washington's Valley Medical in Renton closing massive services on the west side due to some funding changes through the state, state and federal budgets. We also saw last year Forks Hospital and Toppanish Hospital close their labor and delivery, and there are countless other ones that are on the brink. And we have five other rural hospitals in the state that are also very, very close to to not knowing if they will be turning their lights on at the end of the year. So that's just a little bit of the the dynamic of rural health care and and Washington State. We have 48,000 residents that we serve, plus we we serve a very long stretch of I-90 corridor, and we get a lot of emerging cases that come from that as well. And covering that span from Snoqualmie, Summit of Snoqualmie to to the advantage is a huge geographic spread for for one hospital and one health care service to be spread. So it just shows what public hospital districts in Washington active levies. So we are one of the 3.4% that that do not have a levy. So just hand graphic to show how small or how unique we are, and proud to have that up to this point. So we have three rural pillars that we're leaning on with this levy, and Crystal will present on on what those look like.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jason. Hi, everyone. My name is Crystal Densley. I'm born and bred Ellensburg woman, and I'm really, really grateful that you've provided us an opportunity to speak. Hello, everyone who's back here. I'm sorry my back has turned to you. So really, the three main points of this levy, number one is to sustain labor and delivery services. Kind of what that looks like is that our labor and delivery services cost about $8 million a year to sustain. That's 24-hour provider, 24-hour nursing, 24-hour... What did I say? Provider, nursing, and we have to have pediatricians on call as well for our babies. So the cost of this $8 million a year, with the 291 births that Ellensburg had last year, that brought in about $3 million. So as you can see, each year, we run quite a significant deficit just to keep labor and delivery open here. I was somebody who was born at KVH, and I had two of my six babies at KVH. I would have had them all there if I wasn't living away at the time. And no matter where I've traveled and had babies, there was nothing that was as special as being here in my community, having women who were the nurses who I grew up seeing, and they were in the very room when I delivered. And there is really nothing like being able to have your child here in your home. So that's kind of our number one bullet point, sustain labor and delivery. You know, if this levy lid passes, the math completely plugs into labor and delivery. Delivery with just a little under $6 million that will be collected if this levy passes, you can see that directly correlates to labor and delivery services being sustained here. So that's the first. The second is primary care to specialty care. And what that looks like is about 10 years ago, we had 48,000 clinic visits across KVH. This year, we're on trend to do more than 100,000 visits. That means in 10 years, we have doubled the amount of visits that people are coming to KVH to see a provider. If that trend continues, then we have to make sure we have a really strong foundation in primary care, plenty of providers, plenty of access for our community, so that they can get in and be seen in a timely manner. So primary care and specialty care. Our third... Oh, yeah, it might be nice if I actually use my thing. Here's Rob Wagner, looking so handsome on there. Primary care and specialty care. Last but not least is creating and growing careers here right at home. What that looks like is that at KVH, it's not just a job. We're a place for career growth. I had a lovely woman come to me the other day, and she started as a PSR, so someone who's at the front desk, who you see when you check in for an appointment. And she fell in love with health care, and so she went through our MA apprentice program. She became an MA in the who checks you into the physician's office when you come in. And then she came and said, "Crystal, I really want to go to nursing school." And I helped her find a grant, because we're rural, that covered all of her nursing school, and so she's starting in the fall. And that is really the career growth that we're wanting to provide for our community, so that we have that stability, so that families can stay here. I know as somebody who had to leave for a while to be able to come back, that being able to have career growth here in the valley is just paramount. So those are our three bullet points. Sustaining labor and delivery, which is our most important, primary care to specialty care, and last but not least, creating and sustaining career growth here at home. I'm going to turn it back over to Jason for a minute to talk a little bit about keeping our tax dollars local.
Yeah, so Crystal just jumped on on the math of it. So it costs about $8 million to run run labor and delivery and and receive about $3 million from services we provide from that. So massive deficit deficit as you can see from that. The idea of this levy is, yes, it's a tax, and who wants to pay more taxes? If I took a vote, I'm sure nobody would raise their hand, and I wouldn't raise my hand either. But if I frame this as an investment in our community, and that's something that I I can stand behind, get behind, is an investment in our community, an investment to ensure we have health care when we need it, because it's something that everybody does take for advantage until the day that you need it, until the day that you can't drive an hour to a hospital. You can only drive five minutes or 10 minutes. And those are the times where it is really crucial that we have high-quality care right here in our valley. And it's also something that attracts attracts families and people to our community as well. So it really is a lifeline and center to our community, having high-quality health care here. There's a lot of statistics on if you're more than 30 minutes from a hospital or an hour from a hospital, how fast your outcomes decrease for labor and delivery as you come further and further from a hospital. And I'm somebody that also experienced that. So without KVH, I have I have KVH to thank for for my daughter, right? What we anticipated was a total newborn delivery, and what we got was a very rapid, can't get to the hospital fast enough, delivered right when we hit the bed. And she had to have emergent services that our hospital was able to take in account. And because of our hospital and because of massive partners around the state, really, I have a four-year-old daughter today, and that's something that that no amount of money could ever replace or investment in our community. So thank you all for the time.
So before we go too far, so so the public understands we're not taking action today. We do, as an elected body, have the ability to take a stand on a ballot issue. It's kind of the one thing we can do in a public setting politically. So but that's not on the agenda. We are not deciding yes or no, whether or not we, as a body, will support this. And so what I'd like to do is open it up for public comment, understanding that later in this process, I would like to propose that we put this as a resolution to actually consider supporting this publicly at the next meeting. Whether we do so or not will be up to, you know, the seven of us and the input that we get from the community. But we're not doing that today. No for or against, we're questioning. Okay? So anybody in the public who would like to comment or ask a question about this levy? Back. Hand up. Can't see you. There you go. You gotta come up to the... I'm sorry. So I'll explain. So when you guys are making comments up here, again, no comments for or against a ballot measure. Don't identify yourself as a candidate for an office and introduce yourself with name and whether you live in the city, county, or outside the county. There you go.
Hi, my name is Joan Bennett, and I live here in the city. I've been here since 2006. Last time I counted, KVH has something like 35 different parcels of property, and recently they bought over 40 acres on... What's the name of this street? Dollar Way Road. The 40 acres they bought, I believe, was September of 2024. And I was wondering, none of those properties are taxed, and none of them can, I mean, contribute to the tax base. And I would like to know what the purpose of buying 40 acres of property is.
So I'm going to give the hospital district the opportunity to answer that question, but that's not what's being considered here. So there's a hospital, there's hospital district meetings, and I'm sure that you can contact hospital staff, Jason, or attend one of those meetings. So, okay.
Yeah, I can respond.
Okay.
So yeah, the hospital last September did buy 41 acres.
If you step to the mic to make sure everybody can hear you.
We did purchase 41 acres back on on Dollar Way, and I really commend our board for really future-looking for... We spent about five years trying to find an optimal place to, if we ever have to build a replacement hospital. So I assume most people here have probably been to our hospital, and know parking is tight, building's tight, we are out of room to grow. So it's really in that that mindset of a 10 to 15-year, our ability to continue to expand, which again is part of our strategy here, as Crystal mentioned on on point two, is primary care and specialty care. We're out of space to grow, so we we need space to grow, and that's why that is. That parcel also was purchased, and leased to our public district. We try to be very fiscally frequent with our our money. That land was purchased and leased back to the prior owner, and it is taxed by by property taxes.
Oh, you're not here to comment. Yes, sir.
My name is Patrick Devney. I'm a resident of the city of Ellensburg. My father was J.W. Devney, who was the first chief of staff at Kiddehass Valley Community Hospital. In 1962, my father, Dr. Carl Olander, and Dr. Burton Foot approached voters about the formation of Hospital District One. Part of that was to build a new hospital, which is what we have now, KVH. Problems that we see with health care is the availability of practitioners to see us in a timely fashion. Most of the doctors, or I won't call them doctors, but the health care providers that we're seeing now don't have an MD or a DO behind their names. And that, I'm sorry, is unacceptable. Before KVH started to staff their own business, there were two providers here in town, the Taylor Richardson Clinic, located on would be Fifth Street, and the Valley Clinic, which is located where the Safeway is. There were two hospitals at that time, Ellensburg General up on Third Street, and then Valley Hospital located where Safeway is now. Part of the agreement with Hospital District One was to close those two hospitals. At that time, there were three hospitals in town, the Morris Hornson Building, Ellensburg General, and the Valley Hospital. Attracting physicians is primary to the value that our hospital offers. If we're not seeing physicians, why should people actually stay here for their health care, other than...
Sir, if you can make sure you're talking into the microphone.
Okay, why should people stay here if they can't see a practitioner that actually services them? I support a levy. Selling it to the the voters is going to be actually a hard one, based on the services that people are receiving here in town. Anyhow, that's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? So again, I think we're about to have a conversation and maybe put this on the agenda for next meeting. Council, do you have any questions from the hospital district, of the hospital district?
Jason, Crystal, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the information. Just to kind of educate some folks in the room about the levy, you kind of tossed out some numbers. I want to make sure I got this correct. The intention with the levy is that you would generate an additional $6 million annually to help cover the costs of the current labor and delivery that you have. That seems like you'll have a delta of about three, I'm sorry, 5 million, or it's gonna...
About a million.
About a million? Could you kind of talk about what would be the plan would be for the remaining funds that are generated from that levy? And are they going to go to additional services or capital costs, or what's going to be the plan for those additional dollars?
Yeah, so like the prior gentleman mentioned, so retention and recruitment is a massive need in our county and beyond. So that's a that's a nationwide issue of of having retention with physicians. So it'll be to grow that primary care, grow our specialty care, continue to expand, so that we can get our our constituents in in a timely fashion.
Gotcha. Regarding your comment on primary and specialty care, I assume there might be some issues as far as some of the outsourcing that might be done by specialty care currently, which we would hope, which you would hope would get fixed with the levy being enacted. Could you kind of talk about what does it look like as far as the amount of patients have to be outsourced to specialty care outside of Ellensburg that you're hoping to bring back to Ellensburg by providing that service here?
Yeah, so it's it's really services like like primary care is a huge one. We do have a lot of people that have to go outside for primary care even, because you just can't can't get to a physician here. But you also can't in Yakima, and we are seeing others on the west side even. I just had a specialty physical therapy that was trying to go to UW, and they're not allowed to be seen because they're outside of their county even. So these these areas are really starting to tighten down on their programs to see their constituents first. So it's programs like cardiology to continue to expand cardiology, to continue to expand neurology, because these programs are are ones that people don't drive for. They you can call the west side and get an appointment in seven months, but you're not going to drive over that. That patient type is not going to drive over the pass in December and try to risk their life getting over the pass to get their neurology or their cardiology treatment. So these are areas that that we have a massive deficit in serving our patients with these specialties. Urology is another really big one, and podiatry services. So those are areas where where we hope to expand and grow. Currently, we have so much funds, though, that are that are keeping labor and delivery alive and here and healthy and high quality, that that's where those funds are going currently. So we want to have the community really wrap their arms around labor and delivery and say, between your services of labor and delivery and recruiting the community, it's not going to go anywhere. And then those resources can go to investing in other services for our county. And every single dollar stays here.
Three more quick questions, and I'll be done.
How about we...
Okay, go ahead.
We'll...
I just wanted to ask if you had a chance to evaluate what the impact of the Medicaid cuts, Medicaid Medicare cuts are.
Yeah, so the the main cuts on the Big Beautiful Bill are going to be through attrition of people falling off Medicaid. So it goes from currently, we're getting paid from Medicaid, to it'll go to self-insure, because it's a lot of patients that really struggle with navigating the paperwork type of work that will take to to maintain Medicaid. We hope that people will maintain their Medicaid services and stay on Medicaid, because it is a revenue source for for our hospital.
So you don't you don't see a decline in your overall revenues necessarily?
It will. Yes, I would anticipate that it'll decline our decline our revenue. First year probably be 1%, then 3%, 5%. It'll be something that slowly we feel a more impact on over time, as people drop off Medicaid and they seek services.
And this this levy doesn't like backfill any of that?
This levy was completely planned before that. Yep. So that is definitely another major milestone in pressing the resources. And that is a reason why why you saw the University of Washington Valley Medicine closing their one of their many of their clinics. Yep.
Thank you.
And we will see see more of those types of resource constraints going on throughout the state.
On those resource constraints specifically to a rural area, kudos to you and the entire team that's been able to keep KVH here, especially with the climate of some of the rural hospitals closing and everything like that. Could you kind of talk a little bit more on how that has happened specifically for KVH compared to other areas of Washington State or even in the region that that's been happening?
Yeah, I would commend our board and our administrative team for being very fiscally responsible. So we've always led from kind of a fiscal standpoint to to make sure we're making really good, smart, intentional financial investments. The way we get paid from every different insurance plan is different and dynamic, so having people that really know how to work with insurance companies is is has been vital to our success up to this point, and we will still continue all of those efforts as well. As far as other other areas and their constraints, so it's just the continual, as we see, the state's legislative has has put further restrictions on on health care abilities for negotiating contracts as one with commercial insurances. And then at the federal level as well for changes to Medicaid will be will be impactful to us.
Awesome. Final comment that I have is for the audience here. If people are interested in following along as far as information associated with levy or other updates that KVH is planning, whatever is public to them, how can they get in contact with you or the right resources as far as updates?
Yeah, great question. So we have kvhealthcare.org/levyed website. Lots of information on that website, and then there's buttons on there to interact, to ask a question, to get involved. So please jump on that website, take some time and go through there. There's a lot of information on that site. And then if that doesn't answer anything, shoot a message through that portal, and it goes right to Crystal.
Thank you. So, Council, I guess the question is, and just need a consensus, do we want staff to bring back a resolution that we can vote up or down at the next meeting, where we can have a conversation about whether or not this makes sense for us to support it or not?
Yes.
So does anybody oppose that, to have the conversation on the next agenda?
I support the conversation.
Is that what you need?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and thank you. Item six B, this is a planning commission appointment, and there is an opportunity for public comment. This is page 99 in the packet.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Stacy Henderson, Planning Manager. I am pleased to introduce you to Joe Sheeran. He applied for the Planning Commission and has prior experience on the Environmental Commission and Parks and Rec Commission. He's passionate about city planning and serving his community. He attended a Planning Commission meeting on May 22, 2025, and was interviewed on May 30, 2025. The interview panel recommends to counsel his appointment to the Planning Commission. And now I invite Joe to come up and say a few words.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Joe Sheeran. I've lived here 23 years. I'm applying for the Planning Commission. I have a master's degree in environmental studies from California State University Fullerton, and a bachelor's degree from Eastern O R University in Parks and Recreation. I've served and chaired the city's Environmental Commission and Parks and Recreation Committee for 15 years. My work experience includes assistant to the mayor's office in Monrovia, California, Riverside County Planning Department for five years, where I oversaw environmental reports, the website, and habitat conservation plans for five years before moving here. I dedicated the last 20 years to Central Washington University Registrar's Office Degree Checkout, where I've graduated thousands of students. I also had the honor of serving in the US Air Force at Wright Patterson Air Force Base. In closing, I greatly appreciate your time, and I'm excited to serve on the Planning Commission. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Council, any questions, Mr. Sheeran?
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate your service as well, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have no questions, but I would just comment that we interviewed Mr. Sheeran, and and the committee was pleased to see his interest in serving on the Planning Commission. Brings a lot of experience, as he mentioned. So thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody from the public wish to comment? Okay, is this one we confirm? We make the appointment? Which one?
The appointment.
Make the appointment. So, Council, we need a motion.
Motion for the approval of Mr. Joe Sheeran to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion second to appoint Joe Sheeran to the vacant planning commission position. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Item six C, page 103, this is a Landmark and Design Commission appointment consideration.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. Chase Peterson, Associate Planner with Community Development and Staff Liaison to the Landmarks and Design Commission. Tonight before your two recommendations for reappointment and one recommendation for appointment to the LDC. For the reappointments, we have Fred Redman. He most recently served as Chair for the Commission, and Marty Blackson, who most recently served as the Vice Chair for for the Commission. Both have been valued contributors to this Commission, and their continued work would be welcomed for the Landmarks and Design. In addition to the reappointments, we have a new appointment in front of you, Scott Carlson. Mr. Carlson is active within the Ellensburg community. He owns a historic property within the city of Ellensburg, and we we are excited to have him serve on the Landmarks and Design Commission. All the applicants were interviewed on June 25, 2025 by a panel consisting of Commissioner Jeff Watson, Councilmember Thompson, and myself. The interview panel recommends approval of all the LDC appointments presented tonight. I'd like to open up an opportunity for, I know Mr. Carlson's here, if you'd like to speak.
Good afternoon, Council. Good evening. Again, Scott Carlson, looking to be on the Landmarks and Design Committee. I've got a background in construction. I worked for Bell, Soss, and Smith, so I'm very active in the local construction community. I've worked at Central Washington University managing projects up there. And yes, we are the current caretakers of the Big Brown House on Ninth and Wildcat, and really excited about this opportunity. That's it.
Anybody from the public wish to comment on these reappointments or appointments?
I don't know if he would like to speak, but Marty Blackson is on the line.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yeah, hi, I'm Marty Blackson. I've lived in Ellensburg since 2012. I think this will be my third term. I think this will be my third term on the Landmark and Design Commission. It's a fun position for me. I work as an archivist for the university, so I like historic preservation, and I really enjoy my work on the commission.
Thank you. Sorry for that. Okay, nobody from the public? Okay, counsel, we can take this as one, one motion.
Mr. Mayor, move for the approval of two reappointments and one new appointment to the Landmark and Design, Design Commission.
Second.
So a motion second to reappoint Fred Redman, Marty Blackson, and a new appointment for Scott Carlson to the Landmarks and Design Commission. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A two vote aye opposed. That motion passes. We move to public comment on non-agenda items, and while we get a list. Okay, so each speaker's, nobody, well, we had somebody sign up online but did not follow the rules, so we're in the audience only. Speakers' comments limited to three minutes and 30 minutes total, which could be extended by a vote of the city council. We may amend those rules later in the meeting. Speakers not identify themselves as candidates for elective office or make any statements which assist or discuss the campaign of a candidate or elected office or discuss for or against a ballot measure, except next meeting, you'll get to say something. Speakers providing comment on non-agenda items may only address the council on matters which are identified on your registration form and must concern the city's business or over which the city has control. Recognize to speak, state your name, whether you live in Ellensburg, in Test County, or elsewhere, whether you're representing yourself or otherwise, and please introduce the topic that you wish to speak. Speakers are cautioned not to engage in conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the city council meeting. And please note that we normally don't take any action. We may point you in the right direction for some resources, but we won't consider or answer questions directly. Candy Cleary, DEI.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Candy Cleary. I live in Ellensburg, and I'm speaking for myself. I'd like to briefly talk about how diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI, can support not just our values, but our economic strength here in Ellensburg. We all know Ellensburg is growing. With the university here, a mix of long-term residents, students, ranchers, educators, business owners, our community is becoming more diverse in background, in skill, and in perspective. That's not a challenge to manage. It's a resource to invest in. First, embracing DEI helps us grow and support our workforce. Like many small cities, we here in Ellensburg face labor shortages in healthcare, in education, in service, in the trades. When people from all walks of life feel welcomed and included, we widen our talent pool and improve retention. That's good for local employers. It keeps jobs and it keeps tax dollars in our city. Second, DEI supports entrepreneurship and small business growth when everyone in our community, regardless of background, can access resources, training, and fair lending. We create more local businesses. This means fewer vacant storefronts downtown, more family-owned shops, and a stronger sales tax base. Simply put, inclusion fuels innovation and economic vitality. Third, we are home to Central Washington University, which draws students and faculty from around the world. If we want to retain some of that talent after graduation, we need to signal that Ellensburg is a place where everyone has a chance to to contribute to the community. DEI helps us keep skilled young people here as teachers, business owners, public servants, and neighbors. And finally, investing in DEI enhances our town's reputation. More and more families and companies are looking for places that reflect fairness and opportunity. By leading with inclusive policies in hiring, housing, and public services, we position Ellensburg as a forward-looking city without losing our local values. This is not about politics. It's about preparing Ellensburg for long-term, sustainable economic success, and that starts by making sure everyone in our community has a fair shot to succeed. It is strategic. It creates jobs, attracts high-quality talent, and supports entrepreneurs. So let's continue the climb toward equity in Ellensburg. Thank you. Thank you for your time and for your continued leadership in making Ellensburg a place where everybody can succeed.
Thank you. Candace Comfort in City Pool.
My name is Candace Comfort. I'm representing myself, and I live in Kittitas County. As a parent of two young boys who use the City Pool all year, I want to see it around for many years to come. Our pool is so important to our community that Kittitas Valley Healthcare even funds Level One Swim Lessons for Kids so they can learn the lifesaving skill of swimming. People need a place to learn how to swim, for recreating, and for staying fit and healthy. I understand this will require being innovative, as pools are expensive to maintain. As Councilmember Palmer said during the June 2nd City Council meeting, planning these types of things is important to understand, especially the finance piece of it. You can come up with all the plans you want, but if you don't come up with a plan on how to finance it, or at least some ideas on these kinds of things, they just don't happen. While our new six-year Parks Plan is currently being worked on, it won't be done until February 2026. That is seven months that we could actively be working toward increasing our funds for the City Pool. Since the money, quote, "doesn't come out of the general fund," not without something innovative, end quote, I would like to help be a part of the solution and suggest some ideas that I think are feasible. In 2025, Ellensburg had our lobbyist, John Weiss, request over $300,000 from the legislature for the creation of tennis courts at Mountain View Park. I was shocked that the city would put in a request for something new when we can't even adequately maintain what we have now, our City Pool. The city of Sunnyside requested money from the legislature during the 2025 session and received $515,000 for renovations to their pool. Why haven't we done the same? The city of Grandview also recently had $108,000 allocated by the legislature for the design and engineering of a splash pad. There is money to be had, but without even attempting to acquire it, we will never see it like these cities have. I strongly urge city council to take a look at requesting funds for our pool in the 2026 legislative session and talk to the Director of Parks and Rec about it. My second suggestion is one that I know you can't respond to right now, but I would urge you to contact me or Adria after the meeting or by email. Myself, along with Adria, would like to seek permission from city council and the city of Ellensburg to compile a list approved by the city of smaller projects that need to be done at the pool, which we as private citizens could take out into the community. We would like to present these needs to local businesses and see if they would like to donate their time, resources, or finances to them. The business owners of Kittitas County deeply value the people who live here and this place we call home, and we believe they understand what is at stake with the condition of our pool and what we stand to lose if it's not taken care of. In turn, the city would make social media recognitions about each business that donated and create a plaque with the names of those businesses that would proudly be displayed at the City Pool. This idea might be unconventional, but it just might be the ticket we need to start addressing issues at the pool. As always, I appreciate your time and consideration in these important matters because they do matter. Thank you.
Evan Sackett, DEI.
Hello, I am Evan Sackett. I live here in Ellensburg, and I am speaking for myself. I am 16 years old, which makes me the youngest person in this room by the looks of it. I have many friends, almost all of whom identify as LGBTQ+. Having programs sourced in DEI creates spaces that are entirely beneficial for people like me. They build community, friendship, and allow us to breathe in terms of identity. For example, Helen House is a lovely organization that is, in short, a hangout space for LGBTQ+ individuals. This. I go to Helen House every day I can, and in my experience, it has helped me strengthen friendships and given me things to look forward to where there would otherwise be nothing. Helen House has done nothing but helped me. Although Pizza Clutch, as it is known, has also worked wonders for our community, giving us a way to support each other localized entirely within our high school. DEI has made these things possible and will allow such programs to grow, making a bright future for not only queer teens but for all youth in Ellensburg regardless of identity. Thank you all for listening.
Jennifer Patterson, Patterson, excuse me, in comp plan.
Thank you, and thank you for the correction, Rich. Jennifer Patterson, Kittitas County resident. So I'm here again to question why we have DEI in the city of Ellensburg Comprehensive Plan. I've looked, started looking at this quite a while ago, given you guys quite a few names. So now I'm down to, I Googled it, what other cities in Washington State have DEI in their Comprehensive Plan? Came up with five. So I'm like, all right, I'm gonna go look at, hey, I'm gonna actually, instead of keeping looking, I'm just gonna go find it. Well, go to Seattle was number one. Seattle does not have it done in their comp plan. It does list diversity in the introduction, but it is not an element of the Comprehensive Plan, nor a chapter. Go to Tacoma, you read the introduction. It lists equity, but there is no DEI in the chapters. It continues on with everyone that I go to. So my question is, why are we going to be the only place that has it? There has to be some reason that nobody else has it. So I encourage you to look to why we have, why we need to keep it. We just don't need to keep hammering over, we want everybody to feel included. We should have inclusionary language in our entire comp plan. It should be in our introduction. It should be throughout like the others. So also Heidi had mentioned to me in passing that we don't have our comp plan done because we're not required to have it done yet. So I went looking at, while I was looking at some of these other places, there are these places that don't have their comp plans due till 2027 that are already done. There's ones that are in the same timeframe that we have to be done on, but their comp plans are already through, they're in their final review, they're in their final, so I just don't understand why we end up being so far behind everybody. And I know that we'll get done in time, but just because we don't have to have it done until 2026 doesn't mean we couldn't have been working on it sooner.
Adria, I'm only gonna get the first name, so I get it right. And DEI and pool.
And I wasn't gonna say my full name, but I watched the timer, actually starts after you say your full name. So, Adria Bezdecchadono, representing myself in the county. I would like to propose an amendment to the city of Ellensburg, the Municipal Building Code pursuant to the city's authority under Washington State Code to regulate construction standards for public accommodations. This proposal seeks to address the implications of state-mandated diversity, equity, and inclusion policies, particularly those affecting access to restroom facilities. I propose to require that all new public buildings and sustainable remodels include three distinct restroom facilities, one designated for males, one for females, and one for transgender individuals. Currently, state-level DEI initiatives intended to promote inclusivity have introduced policies that permit individuals to access restrooms based on gender identity rather than biological sex. While these mandates aim to foster equity, they have raised concerns among residents regarding privacy, safety, and fairness, particularly in facilities used by diverse populations, including children and vulnerable individuals. The current binary restroom model, male, female, often fails to accommodate the competing interests. By contrast, a triatic restroom requirement offers a practical solution that respects the dignity of all individuals while addressing the everyday challenges posed by state DEI directives. The proposed amendment would revise the city of Ellensburg's building codes to mandate that any new construction or substantial renovation of buildings intended for public use as defined to include three single-sex, single-gender restrooms. These facilities shall be clearly designated as male, female, and transgender, with the latter providing a safe and inclusive place for individuals identifying outside biological binary genders. Each restroom shall comply with the American Disabilities Act accessibility standards as set forth in 28 CFR Part 36, and maintain equivalent amenities to ensure parity. This proposal aligns with Ellensburg's commitment to balancing inclusivity with community well-being. By providing separate facilities, we mitigate privacy and safety concerns while offering a dedicated space for transgender individuals, thus reducing potential conflicts. Moreover, this approach gives Ellensburg local control over the implementation of state DEI mandates, tailoring our response to reflect the values and needs of our residents. Unlike uniform state policies, which may overlook local nuances, this amendment empowers our community to uphold safety and respect for all. To facilitate adoption, I respectfully request that the board initiate a public hearing to solicit community input and evaluate the feasibility of this amendment. Thank you for considering this proposal. I believe it offers a constructive path forward, harmonizing state requirements with local priorities. I look forward to the board's deliberation and the opportunity to contribute to a solution that serves all members of our community. And as we are currently considering a major renovation on our new, or on our current pool facility, I believe we should start there. Thank you.
Tori Jones, DEI.
I think that's me.
What's that?
I think that's me. I didn't quite hear what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Tori Jones. I live in Ellensburg. I'm representing myself. Several weeks ago, mother shared concerns about using the City Pool's changing room. To date, no transgender person has used that space, nor do I believe one ever will. She did, however, propose an inclusive solution, a private changing room. This would ease her fears and also provide a safe place for queer and gender queer people to change clothes. In a diverse community like Ellensburg, inclusion means ensuring that everyone feels welcome, but inclusion alone isn't enough. Equity means everyone has a safe place to shower and change. Wheelchair ramps are an excellent example of inclusive design. They ensure individuals with different abilities have access to public spaces. An accessible space doesn't exclude others, it just allows a broader range of participation. Hate speech, as defined by the United Nations, is language that targets people based on race, color, gender, sexual orientation, or other identity factors. Dehumanizing someone by calling them bestial or depraved based on their sexual orientation is hate speech. In America, hate speech is protected speech until it incites violence or hate crimes like those committed at Ellensburg High School. On December 12, 2024, the Department of Justice reported, quote, "Black, Latino, and LGBTQ+ students in the district had endured widespread harassment, including taunts, intimidation, humiliation, epithets, slurs, and death threats. Some students were also physically assaulted. The school district's failure to adequately respond despite its knowledge of this harassment left students vulnerable, leading some to miss class, drop school activities, avoid areas of campus, and even transfer or leave school altogether," end quote. The DOJ defines hate crimes as crimes based on race, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, or disability. These often involve violence like assault or threats of murder. What happened at EHS is a clear example of systemic racism, homophobia, and transphobia. The district knew the severity of the situation and failed to act. Inaction isn't neutral, it's harmful. I believe the Ellensburg DEI Commission can help chip away at prejudice. Through steady work, we can build a community where everyone feels seen, respected, and included." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am, sorry.
I'm Ally Durmond. I am a resident of Ellensburg, and I'm speaking on my own behalf. When I first heard about it, the number was 104. The city received 104 proposals to amend the Comprehensive Plan by removing the DEI Commission. Within a couple days, the number grew to 119, and then 306, until finally everyone felt pretty sure it was 309. 309 proposals to remove the DEI Commission. But not just remove. The word eliminate was used at least 29 times, abolish 21, and 19 citizens used the word eradicate, eradicate, Chapter 9. These aren't the only commonalities across proposals. It's clear to me these proposals were coordinated, if not occasionally coerced. At least 162 proposals, more than 50%, were written on March 30th, 2025, one day prior to the deadline, which happened to be a Sunday. But most noteworthy is that a significant number of them use the exact same sentence, remove Chapter 9, diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as policy connections in housing, transportation, capital facilities and utilities, park and rec, and city development. park and rec, and city development. City staff who are familiar with the process report that 309 proposals in one year is extraordinary. But we know from Kiddatask County court records that this was a coordinated effort that took place in at least one church. Recently, looking at the Facebook page for Joshua Thompson for Ellensburg City Council, Position 4, I noticed his post on February 27, sharing the city's post about the comp plan amendment process. The earliest date written on one of the proposals was four days later, March 3. Over the month of March, proposals were authored with increasing frequency, with notable peaks on March 26 and March 28, just before a post from Joshua Thompson's Facebook page on March 29, strongly urging his followers to submit a proposal. This all ended with a spike in proposals on March 30. Councilmember Thompson submitted a proposal himself on March 30, calling for the termination of the DEI Commission, all DEI policies, and removal of Chapter 9. He refers to DEI as poison, and then writes, cancel DEI. Poison wasn't the worst, it got called. Discriminatory, oppressive, and racist were common adjectives used to describe the DEI Commission, and 2% of proposals called the DEI Commission downright unfair. Commenter number 91 wrote, "DEI marginalizes conservative members of our community." They called the DEI Commission destructive, dangerous, or harmful at least 8% of the time, sometimes noting specifically that DEI sexualizes children. Several people, several proposals discussed how the concept of DEI, ugh, is out of time. I'll be back in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to item 8A. This is page 113 in the packet. These are proposed resolutions 2025, 14, and 15 that deal with the transit funding. One is a special election proposition to fund Ellensburg Public Transit, which is contingent upon a repeal of the existing transportation, sales, and use tax. There will be an opportunity for public comment, and this is a public hearing, so I got a big script to read. Okay, the purpose of the public hearing is to consider resolutions 2025, 20, excuse me, 2025, 14, calling for the special election on November 4, 2025, regarding a 2/10 of 1% or 0.2% sales tax, sales and use tax for public transit funding, and resolution 2025, 15, to repeal the existing 2/10 of 1%, 0.2% transportation, sales, and use tax contingent upon voter approval of the public transit funding proposition at the November 4, 2025 special election, and receive comments on these items, and we'll explain why they're linked that way. The public hearing is now open. I ask for your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone will be given an opportunity to be heard. The city clerk will be making a recording of the proceedings. If you wish to participate in the hearing virtually, raise your hand. If you're on a phone, press star 9, and wait till you're recognized. You should then begin by stating your name and address, this is for all speakers, and indicate whether you are speaking for yourself individually or as a spokesperson for a certain group or poll. Speak slowly and clearly, only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. Your testimony must only address the matter under consideration in this hearing. Any questions of staff are to be directed through council. Each person will have an opportunity to address council for an initial period not to exceed five minutes. If more time is needed, it will be made available after everyone has had an opportunity to speak. So before we hear from the audience, is there a sound report?
Yes, mayor, there is. Prepare this. Okay, good evening, mayor, council, and members of the Ellensburg community. Heidi Baron-Sernway, City Manager. I'm gonna set the stage for what's contained in the resolutions tonight and try to simplify things a little bit, and then I will hand things over to our city attorney, Horner, to talk about the logistics and the language of the ballot measure that's proposed in the resolution. So this is a discussion that started really with the budget process in the end of this last year. As we looked at the budget, I'm looking at the pressure on our general fund and the increase in sales tax that's been contributed to transportation over time. As council went through a number of discussions with the Public Transit Advisory Committee and with members of the community talking about how to move forward with this, and ultimately then they ended up separating the issues of sales tax funding for transportation and transit, and I'll talk a little bit about that, too. Right now, if you look at our current sales tax rates in the City of Ellensburg, so if you spend $1, 6.5 cents goes to the state, essentially. There are local options that actually go to very specific, and we call these restricted revenues in our, in our budget. And right now, what we're talking about tonight has to do with 2/10 of a percent that has funded transit since 2016 for the community. And that's in the form of a transportation benefit district. Transportation benefit districts are allowed by the state, and again, cities can only enact tax measures that are authorized by state. This is typically a tax measure that's used to support transportation. And in Ellensburg, we are the only community that actually uses this to support transit services. And so in 2016, the voters of this community elected to approve 2/10 of a percent, and this had a 10-year timeframe, and it was through the Transportation Benefit District, RCW, so Revised Code of Washington, essentially state law. And, and this, again, this, this sales tax was set to expire on September 30 of 2026. That was the 10-year period. State law does allow up to 3/10 of a percent, and that has to be voted. The first, first tenth of a percent can be council-matic. And so again, we have an active 2/10 of a percent for transit services. If you look at funding across transit agencies, again, Ellensburg is the only one that uses, and I'll use TBD for Transportation Benefit District. There is another mechanism that is more commonly used for cities and also for transit authorities, and those are typically countywide or something larger than a city. And the, Ellensburg has the lowest, and Grant County, according to the Municipal Research and Services Center, actually has the same, the same 2/10 of a percent. Some of the districts for the transit agencies in the state have up to 1.2 cents, and so, so we have a very low rate that supports transit through this Transportation Benefit District, and compared to other communities, it's quite a low rate that has grown a transit system over the last 10 years. The ballot measures that you have before you effectively do two things. One, it's, the first one, 2025, 14, places a new voted measure before the voters of the community, and it's to enact a 2/10 of a percent, but it's to use that transit sales tax. And then the second resolution you have in front of you today actually repeals, if that were, if that voted tax measure is approved, it repeals the existing 2/10 of a percent, which is set to expire on September 30 of 2026. And so essentially looking to replace and just maintain services. And I thought that was really important because there's a lot of language that is both in the staff report as background and also in the ballot measure and the resolutions as well. So just a little visual to show folks what this does is, if approved by the voters of the community, this one enacted 2/10 of a percent for transit, and again, just within the City of Ellensburg, and it would also, at the same date, given the second contingent resolution, it would eliminate or repeal the 2/10 for the Transportation Benefit District. So we would have the same tax rate, this is not raising taxes. This is actually a replacement revenue. And it will be clear that the Transportation Benefit District has a 10-year sunset. The transit service, it does not have a sunset date on it. All right, and then I will turn it over to City Attorney Horner for more.
Good evening, Council, Chris Horner, City Attorney. I won't repeat what Heidi said, she did a great job of summarizing, but you have two resolutions in front of you. The first would put, and that's 2025-14, would put the ballot measure in front of the voters in November. And if council approves this resolution, at the next meeting, we'd come back and have you appoint a pro and con committee, that's required under statute, where up to three people are on a committee in favor of the ballot measure, and up to three people would be on a committee that disapprove of the ballot measure. Council members themselves are free to serve on the pro and con committee. And so if the resolution tonight passes, at the next council meeting, we'd have council appoint pro and con committee. And there, as part of that, could be a public notice and an invitation for interested members of the public to apply to be on the pro and con committee. So that's one of the pieces of the logistics for ballot for resolution 2025-14. The reason why we did two separate resolutions was that it's stronger and cleaner legally, and council yourselves have the ability to repeal the existing TBD tax. And so we drafted it in a way that's contingent upon approval of the ballot in November, if that's what the voters choose to do. And again, I would say the goal is to try to time the repeal of the existing tax with approval of the new tax so that there is no double collection of tax for the same thing. And so that's why those resolutions were carefully worded, to try to time that correctly so there would only be one tax at a time.
Thank you. The floor is open to testimony from the public. If anybody in the audience wishes to make a comment on this matter, let me know. Anybody in the audience? Nobody online? Yeah, so I'm gonna give you some rules here. Five minutes, and you, we'll get more time at the end, if needed.
So Adriah Bezdecheck Dono, County. Just curious, you said there was no sunset, and the last time we talked about it, I think I heard one of the council members say that they would prefer a sunset. Can it be revisited? Why would you not have a 10-year? Isn't that what sunset means, is that it has an ending? I believe that's what it means. Why would we not have that? What's the specifics between, or the pros and cons of yes and a no on having that? I'm not familiar.
Can I respond to that, or is that my, okay. So I think we're gonna get to that because I have sort of the same issue. Just because it doesn't have a sunset clause can't, doesn't mean that council and/or the voters can't revisit it, and I was gonna ask about that process when we get back to staff. So, anybody else in the audience? Go ahead.
Jim Harrison, I'm a City of Ellensburg resident, I'm also on the PTAC Board. I'd ask that the council go forward with the proposal you've come up with. I think it's a really logical one. I do wanna highlight, for those who are worried about this, this does not ask for an increase in your taxes. This would not result in any tax increase in the city. It's simply replacing the .2 with another .2. It currently is and will continue to be the lowest sales tax rate in the state for public transit. And those who don't ride the bus still get benefits from this because this is getting people who are, they're getting from their apartment or their dorm room downtown to buy supplies and food and go to the shops. There's more parking downtown because people are taking those bus. People are getting into the hospital appointments, the doctor appointments. You can take the bus to the park, you can take the bus to the city pool. It helps to connect the, the community, and it's in a really cost-effective way. It's the lowest one there. As far as the type of tax, one, one thing I would say about the advantage of the section you wanna do it under, transit is a long-term proposition. And this current system is in its infancy, and we're asking for basically the lowest rate you can ask for. If we were to reduce the rate, we would not be eligible for a lot of state funding because the funding and grant money wouldn't let us have it. So reducing the rate would actually penalize us more. And like, the Pullman system was back in '79. The Akama system, the ones down in Akama, the ones up in north of us, in Shalane County, those were in the 70s also. Seattle's had a transit system since before my bomb was born. So you can tell that's a long-term thing. They take time to grow and develop, and if you don't know for sure you have a stable tax fund, it makes it hard to plan long-range for, for cleanup facilities, capital structure, infrastructure. So for a long-term planning, it makes sense. Then you can invest, figure out your plan, figure out your process. We're already discussing ways of rearranging what we're doing, trying to get better service in a cost-effective manner. And this helps us to have a long-term vision and approve. You don't wanna start building buildings if you don't know the thing's gonna be there for, for long-term. And so it really helps long-term planning, it makes it a better investment for our community. So I just ask that you go along and put this, and frankly, like I said, we're not asking for a tax increase. What we're really asking for is to let the community have a voice in our future. And by putting it on the ballot, you're letting the community have a voice in where we're gonna go, what we're gonna do, and what we want our, our city to look like. And I, I don't know how anybody can be against the community having a voice in our future. So thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Staff have anything to add? Okay, I do, but I'm gonna, council, do you have any questions of staff or the public?
Just wanna clarify that, that the repeal is automatic. We don't have to take further action. If we pass both of these resolutions, it just happens. If, if it, the one passes, the other is repealed.
Correct, yep, the repeal is contingent upon passage of the November, on the November ballot, and if that passes, then the resolution, if you approve it tonight, would automatically repeal the existing.
Thank you.
That's why we have a good lawyer, just saying. So I wanna ask about the, the concept of sunset clauses, and just on a broader scale. I think that's why partially we're such a mess nationally. So future councils could put this back to the voters at any point, and the council could take an action to not just put, put it back, but can the council repeal this tax, or is this one only by voter?
I have not researched the specific answer to your question, but I would note that the wording of the proposed ballot is authorized tax up to .2, .2/10 of a percent. That's up to .2/10 of a percent. So there's discretion in the ballot to make a different decision down the road.
Councils can do that. Okay, okay.
Below the .2.
So up to .02% could mean zero.
Correct, and that's the theory under repeal of the existing tax. That was the ballot in 2016, said .2% for up to 10 years.
And, and we're discussing right now whether or not to put, to enact these resolutions, not whether or not we support, you know, a position on the ballot measure. So, you know, again, I'm not asking, I'm not bringing this up because I think we should in the future. What I'm trying to say is, is that when you don't put a sunset clause on it, it does not absolve your elected officials, it does not absolve the public of a pathway and a responsibility to stay engaged and decide how your tax money gets spent. That's my point. Okay. The public testimony of this hearing is now closed. Council may begin its discussion and deliberation. And again, the discussion and deliberation is whether or not to approve resolutions 24, 20, 2025, 14, and 2025, 15.
Can I just have some clarification on the pro and con committees? So is, it can be council members or community members?
Correct, it's up to three people for each pro. The pro side and the con side each get three people. Council members are one of the three people if they so choose to.
Could be.
Okay, so how do people?
Yeah, we gotta go back into public hearing if you're gonna ask questions of staff.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we'll reopen the public hearing, because I have that power, apparently. My little script is, okay, we're back in public hearing, now you can ask questions.
So how do we get that out to people that aren't sitting in this room?
We would make a public announcement and probably do a news release and ask for people to volunteer or self-appoint.
And is that, so if this passes tonight, I'm just trying to get clarification, it would come back at our next council meeting, and we would have to appoint that committee?
That's correct, that's correct.
And if the council did not appoint a pro and con committee, then it would be up to the county auditor to do so. So city council gets first.
Don't even go there.
Put it on Brian, put it on Brian.
What is the deadline for, if I could ask the clarification, what's the deadline for? The deadline for establishing the committee is not next meeting.
Not next meeting, it's the same date that you have to get the resolution approved, which I It's the same date that you have to get the resolution approved, which I believe is August 5.
Okay. So there's time.
Yes.
So we got a couple of meetings every two soon.
Yep.
Because that's a pretty tight timeframe to advertise and get names and...
I believe that's only two meetings.
Yep. Okay. We done with questions?
Well, yeah, but so, but it's still just the two weeks, though, to get the people to apply or show interest and then us to pick them. Correct?
And it can be a very simple process, too.
Four weeks from now, they'd have to be, we'd have to have a committee.
We'd have two weeks to approve.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Just a real quick clarification. So this contains no sunset clause. This would be in perpetuity until other action like by the council, but there'd be nothing that says we've got to go back and look at it like we're doing now where it was 10 years. That's correct.
Correct. It would be effective until further action by council, whenever that might be.
Okay. And then there would be, I think I understand this, but again, clarifying that if adopted, net, there would be no difference in the current tax on citizens because old one just goes out. This is just essentially continuing from the 10-year, the same percentage. Correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Could I ask, I just want to make sure I understand fully. The clarification on the absence of sunsetting is entirely, I mean, the way the draft measure has been written is entirely consistent with the language that is in the RCW. We're not making this up on our own, right? We have to follow the guidance.
That's correct. Yeah, the Transportation Benefit District RCW requires a 10-year sunset, and the language in the transit sales tax does not require a sunset.
Does it allow a sunset?
As part of your resolution, you could, you could add a sunset.
Okay.
So all these questions have prompted a question. Will the Transportation Benefit District go away?
The benefit, Transportation Benefit District is actually part of the city code, and it will not go away. The funding for it will go away. And council is the body that oversees that. And so this is just the sales tax that would be repealed for that. The structure would still be retained within city code.
Okay. Thank you.
How long have you got to get in on this?
Well, I think I'm going to, thank you. Actually, I was actually going to direct it. I saw a couple of folks out there. So are we still open?
We have to go back to public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. All right. No, I'm actually kind of good right now.
Just checking. Okay. Now the public testimony is here, hearing is closed, but we still reserve the right to come back. Okay. We need a motion to make, have a discussion.
I'll move to adopt the proposed Resolution 2025-14 and also 2025-15.
Second.
We have a motion second to pre-resolutions 2025-14 and 15. 14 calls for a special election ballot proposition to fund general, or excuse me, Ellensburg Public Transit and contingent repeal, which is 15, contingent repeal of the existing transportation, sales, and use tax. Discussion.
Well, I'll just jump in. It was said earlier in comments, but I mean, this is, it doesn't get any more basic than this. It puts the question in front of the community, and it is the community's decision. So it isn't the council imposing our will. It's presenting a question for the community. And in 2016, the community voted strongly in favor of supporting transit, so we will ask the question again.
And I guess, just to provide a little context, because I kind of pushed for this to be changed around a little bit because we were sort of going the other direction. This is the intent of the RCW. We were using the taxes a little bit differently, which is, was, was legal and acceptable, but this sort of puts it into the right column from my perspective. I agree that all taxing decisions, excluding the point, taking care of the 1% that is voter approved for sales tax each year, excuse me, property tax appreciation each year, should be made by the public. So I support it. We'll have a conversation. We'll talk about, you know, what that .2% means to the public and to the public transportation system in November. And again, I agree that it's very straightforward, so.
I'll say I was absent when you guys switched, but I agree with, it makes more sense under this funding source than the previous one. I, Mr. Herson's comments resonate with me that having some stability long-term is helpful. The putting this on the ballot every 10 years costs us. I'm not sure what the election costs, but there, it is not free to put this on the ballot. And, and to, I mean, we're essentially building the infrastructure and buying things and we're not to pass in, you know, 10-year increments. It, we would have to dissolve things, unravel everything, sell stuff off. I'm just, I'm not sure how that provides our citizens what, with the stability that we need to have.
Okay.
I'd like to comment that I think it's been a process, but it's been a good one. Appreciate the staff's leadership on this. And at the point where we started to where we are right now, I think we've made a really good decision and set up a really strong system to maintain our transit system into the future.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two will vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Item 9A, page 129. This is second reading and potential adoption of ordinance 4964, which are traffic code revisions naturally. And there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Derek Mayo, City Engineer. Before you tonight is second reading of ordinance 4964 with proposed revisions Title 8 of the Ellensburg City Code. First reading was held at your June 16 meeting. And the proposed revisions include the removal of the northwest corner of Pearl Street and Fourth Avenue from the municipal parking lot section of the code due to the recent construction of Unity Park at this location. The second revision is the reduction of the speed limit on Bull Road south of Mountainview Avenue from 35 miles per hour to 25 due to the significant increase in residential development on the street and the lack of the outlet on the south end. And the last revision is codified the speed limit on Umtanum Road at 35 miles per hour from 520 feet west of Lake Hurway to the west city limits. A small portion of this, west of I-90 was previously 50 miles per hour, but with the reduced speed limit, it'll match the currently changed, recently changed 35 mile per hour speed limit the county did just west of city limits. So with that, staff recommends council consider second reading and adoption of ordinance 4964, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Normally you ask for money, so I have no questions.
Not this time.
Any questions of staff? If you've been in the audience, wish to speak on the traffic code revisions? Nothing online? So council...
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Go for it. Wow. Yeah, simultaneous run for it. Take it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to consider second reading and adoption of traffic code ordinance number 4964.
Second. Motion second for second reading ordinance 4964, which are the traffic code revisions. Is there any discussion? If none, will the clerk call the roll?
O'Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Goodlow.
Yes.
Loquas.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Ellensburg, Washington relating to Title 8, traffic and amending sections 8.20, 8.40, and 8.42.20 of the Ellensburg City Code.
We got along that time.
Yep.
Item 9B, proposed ordinance 4965. This would be first reading. This is a telecommunications franchise agreement with Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC. There will be an opportunity for public comment, and we are at page 135.
Good evening, council. City Attorney Chris Horner, you have in front of you the first reading of ordinance 4965 for Zipley Fiber telecommunications franchise agreement. It's a new agreement for 10 years. It has an option to renew for another five-year period. It's a non-exclusive franchise. It's pretty straightforward. The only wrinkle, I would say, in the terms of the agreement is that Zipley asked for city council approval if it goes, undergoes a corporate takeover either from BCE Inc. or Network Fiber Company that would involve a change in corporate ownership of more than 20%, 20% of voting interest. Zipley and the next item, the next ordinance, proposed ordinance wholesale are like related companies, but staff's recommendation was that there be two separate franchise agreements. And I'll get to why for the next ordinance. So unless there were any other questions, I have nothing further to add.
Any questions of staff? Because I have one.
I have one.
Go ahead.
So in the agenda report, under financial impact, it says none, but I do see there's a $5,000 fee that they're paying. Is that, that's the only compensation that the city gets for this agreement?
I believe that's correct, and the $5,000 is to compensate for staff time in reviewing and approving the ordinance.
So essentially supposed to be neutral?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So now I have two questions. So, but they're providing service to people who live in the community. So there is some benefit to the community.
And utility taxes?
And utility tax eventually. Okay. So the question I have is regardless of who becomes the company, is there, do you see any risk to the city in saying you can get bought out and this agreement keeps going even if they turn dark fiber on and cyborgs and stuff like that? And obviously...
No, I like that.
Well, I mean, it's just that, that's weird to me, but maybe in the telecommunications industry where you don't know who you're working for month to month, this makes sense. It feels weird to me to make a specific exception, say, no matter who owns you, the agreement stands.
Yeah.
That bothers me a little bit.
It would be just those two options, and Zipley provided some information about this long-standing process for a corporate takeover that may occur later this year. And the wording of the ordinance would still, like the terms and conditions would apply to whoever takes over, so that would provide some assurance. But it is council's decision on whether you're comfortable with that.
So the agreement would bind any future owner...
Successors.
Jury share.
Okay, so no terminators. Got it.
And I just mentioned, we've seen this type of change, of ownership change. Typically, these companies are purchased by retirement funds, and they have like a seven-year sunset, and so typically they'll be bought and sold every few years.
I think my provider has been, we're on my fourth owner. And I don't remember getting new agreements for every one of them.
So public comment.
I have a question.
Oh, questions of staff?
I'm just curious about the extension for five years. That seems kind of weird. Is, I mean, we're going to do it for 10, and then we can extend it for five. Is there a reason it's only five?
I'm not sure of the reason off the top of my head. It seemed consistent with some of the other franchise agreements that are in place. I can look into it and get you a better answer.
Well, it may be the standard way they do business. I just thought it was kind of interesting.
Yeah.
That if things are going really well, well, we'll do it for five more years, so. Okay.
Public comment. Nobody online, which is ironic, too. Okay. So let's get a motion, and then we can start discussing.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that, excuse me, I move first reading of ordinance 4965, the Zipley Fiber telecommunications franchise agreement.
Second.
Motion second for first reading ordinance 4965. Discussion.
Rich, I appreciate your comments. I think the indemnification clause and the hold harmless clause in here to your concern addresses those things. And I know that everybody cannot see that, but just insert, it's, "The franchise shall identify and hold the city's official employees, volunteers, harmless, from any and all claims, injuries, damages, lawsuits, suits, including attorney fees arising out of, in, out of or in connection with the granting of the franchise except for injuries or damages caused by assault, negligence, gross negligence, or willful misconduct of the city. The requirement extends to any work performed or conducted under the authority of the franchise by the franchisees or his contractors or subcontractors." Goes on to, for a little bit more detail on that, but I'm fine with how that reads out for your concern that you were just talking about. Thank you.
I'll just say competition's good for our residents in this area, and we have not always had it.
Okay. So, so a motion second, no further discussion. So all those in favor of ordinance 4965, first reading.
Aye.
Aye.
I, two will vote aye opposed. That motion passes.
An ordinance of the City of Ellensburg, Washington granting Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC a non-exclusive franchise for 10 years to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications network within the City of Ellensburg, Washington, and setting forth conditions accompanying the grant of franchise.
Item 9C, page 157. We'll do it again. This is ordinance 4966 for a franchise agreement with Wholesale Networks LLC, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Chris Horner, City Attorney, again. The Wholesale Networks franchise agreement is very similar to Zipley's, the one you just approved. The major difference from Wholesale and Zipley is that Wholesale is taking, or previously took over, the franchise given to Noel Communications. And that was an existing franchise that's expiring later this month, and Wholesale wants a new franchise agreement. The new franchise agreement is newly rewritten and updated and is consistent with the terms of the agreement to Zipley, also for 10 years with an option for a five-year renewal, also with the preapproval for a change in ownership later this year if it's for BCE Inc. or Network Fiber Company, and a transfer of more than 20% of voting interest.
Questions of staff? Summit from the audience.
You got a question?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
I just, I want to understand, I almost feel like I need some sort of flow chart to understand all these companies and how they interrelate and who's retiring and who's coming, and one saying like, we want a license for 10 years, but we don't know who we're going to be in 12 months. You know, the further I read into this, I was reading it earlier, and now just thinking about, I'm confused as all hell as to what's actually going on here. Could you provide just some clarification? Because there's clearly a connection between the two, and then, like, I, you know, I don't know where to start, honestly.
So with the current ordinance, Noel Communications had a franchise agreement for many years, and I believe it was first implemented 15 years ago, and we're now at the expiration of its last option for renewal. But partway through that franchise agreement, it was taken over by Wholesale. And so Wholesale is the current franchise holder. And so they want a new franchise because the Noel one is expiring later this month.
Okay.
And so instead of just like saying same terms that have been in place for the last 15 years, city staff went through and updated and revised and provided stronger defense and indemnity language, updated terms and conditions. And then as part of the negotiations with Wholesale and Zipley, they said, by the way, we're being taken over potentially by a larger company later this year. And instead of bringing it back to council, they wanted to know if we'd accept these preapproval terms. And so that's the way it was drafted.
How, how is Wholesale and Zipley related? They're separate companies with separate ownership structures?
They are related companies, and I don't remember exactly who owns who, but they are related companies. But they are separate entities, like they're separate LLCs.
Okay.
And I, under this reorganization, they may all go under the same big company. They sent me some info on the press releases for the proposed takeover later this year. So it's up to council, again, whether you're comfortable or not with that, but that was
And I just remind folks that our franchise agreements are really to protect our city interests because we have people that are installing things in the right of way, and for the customer, it actually creates some certainty because they're investing in the infrastructure to deliver their service in our community, too. So at the end of the day, the, the ownership of the company, as long as we have clear terms that we're protecting the city's interests, and there, there are some parameters around the limits of them, it's, it's really, it's, the, the ownership is less critical because of the terms that we have in place within the agreement.
I have a question. So if I'm understanding, we've had one internet provider for the last 15 years?
We've had more than one internet provider.
So we're just fixing Noel because Noel's going out of business with this? Is that, or that, that's?
Noel had the existing franchise agreement, then Wholesale took that number partway through, and now Wholesale wants to renew it, and instead of just saying same terms and conditions, it's an updated franchise agreement with more up-to-date terms for the city.
Okay.
I think, my impression is it's the same type of evolution and marketplace that we saw 10, 15 years ago with cable television, Charter Spectrum, you know, there was an acquisition involved there. It didn't make any difference in terms of providing the services to the community as long as the performance meets our requirements. I think it's, it's impossible to keep up, sort of like predicting, you know, the next wave of technology. It's, things change pretty rapidly in this space, so I'm not, I don't think it's, we, even if we had a flow chart, all due respect, it would be wrong probably tomorrow, so I'm, I'm good.
I'm, I'm good with this, too. I'm just wondering, where did Zipley come from? Did they just come to the table and say, hey, we'd like to provide services to Kidittas County?
They did.
Okay. Carrie?
Okay, so we got.
Sorry, this is, this is more to the technical question as far as those services expiring at the end of next month, so we would be essentially in limbo when it comes to those services if we did not extend this. Yeah, so this is the continuation of the scope of work just under a title, under a new company name who is, who has decided or who has informed us that they are going to be changing company names in a couple of months.
With, with terms that are more up to date with our current standards.
Yeah.
Okay. That's amazing.
I'm gonna give the public one more shot because we talked a while. Okay, so we have a motion second for first reading ordinance 4966, which is a franchise agreement with Wholesale Networks LLC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I still vote aye, opposed?
Abstained.
That passes with one abstention and two abstentions?
I don't understand it well enough.
Okay, so it passes.
Yeah.
An ordinance of the City of Ellensburg, Washington, granting Wholesale Networks LLC a non-exclusive franchise for 10 years to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications network within the City of Ellensburg, Washington, and setting forth conditions accompanying the grant of franchise.
Resolution 202511, which would amend fiscal year 2025's pay plan for nonrepresented employees. There will be an opportunity for public comment. This is page 178.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Young, HR Director for the City of Ellensburg. I have for you a resolution 202511 amending the fiscal year pay plan for 2025 for nonrepresented employees. Late last year, resolution 202433 was submitted to council to establish the fiscal year 2025 pay scales for nonrepresented employees, and this resolution would amend that resolution 202433 to provide some market and comp adjustments. The Assistant City Attorney position was recently vacated, and to improve our ability to attract quality candidates and fill the position quickly, we reviewed and adjusted the wage to attract quality candidates and be more in line with comparable agencies. We also created a second tier for the position to account for a broader range of experience that applicants may have. While recruiting for this position, staff have initiated discussions with county prosecutor's office to explore contracted service model alternative for prosecution and related costs. The pay grade for service desk specialist in IT has been the same as the executive assistant in the city manager's position, in the exec, sorry, the executive assistant position was adjusted one pay grade from 13 to 14 with the 2025-2026 biennial budget, but the service desk specialist was not adjusted. This resolution will realign the two positions. The financial impact for these two changes for the remainder of 2025 is $8,148. That is, of course, contingent on filling the Assistant City Attorney position, so that's kind of at a max estimate for 2025. With regard to the service desk specialist adjustment for IT, IT has experienced some salary savings due to staff members taking family leave under the Washington Pay Family and Medical Leave Act, and costs for administrative and internal service functions will be charged to beneficiary funds via the standard budget and accounting procedures. Additional expenditure authority will be included in the next supplemental 2025-2026 biennial budget. With that, I will happily answer any questions.
Counsel, questions of staff?
I have a question. So you, you mentioned discussions with the county prosecutor's office about contracted service. Is that still ongoing discussions?
Yes.
We're, we're not necessarily going to hire someone ourselves, we potentially could?
That is correct. We are pursuing both pathways at the time. We still have a position open and are actively recruiting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? So this doesn't, I don't necessarily want to hold up the resolution itself, but I want counsel to consider and potentially take action, or at least deliberate in future meetings, is that we have not done a market analysis, and we have not necessarily adjusted the city manager's salary, and everybody else is getting, you know, their market adjustments. I think we need to have that conversation. I'm not advocating for a specific thing, I'm just saying I want that on the agenda, and you can cover your ears if you don't want to hear it. I don't care.
That's a good idea. I think we should be doing that regularly.
Just, I'm just letting you know, I'm gonna come back and, and talk about this, so.
We've let managers slip behind before.
We do that, and then we try to catch up, and it ends up costing us more in the long run. Okay, so, public comment on resolution 202511. This is the nonrepresented pay plan. Nope. Okay, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I move to adopt resolution 2025-11, amending the fiscal year 2025 pay plan for nonrepresented employees and approval of the necessary budget adjustments.
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt resolution 202511, which amends the pay plan for 2025 with all of the approvals. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I still vote aye, opposed? That motion passes. Item 9E, page 186, this is resolution 202513. This would amend the city council rules of procedure. This is what we talked about before, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Correct. City, City Attorney Chris Horner, in front of you are draft rule amendments to council rules 1, 4, and 7 to try to incorporate the discussion at the previous meeting. I made a, an attempt to amend the rules consistent with the discussion. A new section 1.9 adds access and reasonable accommodation provisions to provide extra time for individuals needing extra time during public comment for reason of language, access, or disability. There's an amendment to section 4.3 on proclamations. City council has had a recent trend of not reading the full text of proclamations at a council meeting, and it was discussed that maybe that would be formalized in the rules. So that's the amendment to, proposed amendment to section 4.3. There's a proposed amendment to section 7.2, oh, sorry, yes, 7.2B5 is to formalize council's recent trend of granting additional time at the end of council agendas for a continued public commentary. And so those are the proposed amendments. They can be worded at council's discretion, but that is in front of you for your decision.
So before we get to the public comment piece or the discussion, so my intent in the proclamation was not to codify that we aren't reading proclamations. I think the rules as they exist gave the mayor the ability to do it or not do it and sort of manage that process, and so when we get to that point, I'm actually going to speak against codifying it because I think there needs to be the flexibility to move around without having to change the rules. I'm doing it for a reason right now, and people either like it or don't, but it's one of the two things I get to do as mayor. So anyway, I just wanted to put that out there before we start the public comment piece.
Let me tack on to that. One of the public comments we received in writing recently suggested, and I, I don't know if it was intended, but the, the practice of posting proclamations or not posting, and I guess there was a process where we use Facebook or something at one point. Personally, I would prefer that we set aside a spot on our city website that's easy to find, that someone that's interested in proclamations can click on it and see what the proclamation, the current proclamations are.
So when we get to that, when we get to the discussion, we'll do that. So let's have a public conver, public comment first. Okay, you're up.
I'll speak.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Go ahead. This is one of those three-minute times.
Ally Durman, City of Ellensburg, resident, and just want to show my support for accommodating for needs to, in terms of time for those who first languages in English, or who might have some form of disability. Sounds like a great idea.
Anybody else? Okay, so let's get in a motion on the table for the resolution, and then we can do discussion on how to amend the rules.
Well, I'll move, Mr. Mayor, move approval resolution 202513, amending rules 1, 4, and 7 of the city council rules of procedure.
You're second.
Second.
So we have a motion second to approve resolution 202513. Now we're at discussion. Nancy, good call.
Yeah, I, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to strike item 4.3J, which is the changing, making the, changing the reading of the proclamations and not, not reading them at all. It'd taken away the flexibility that we have right now to make that decision. Does that make sense?
You want to change it so that we're reading them all?
Well, I want to leave it the way it is right now, and this seems counter to that.
Just striking the amendment to?
So strike out J completely?
So we don't need to codify it. In other words, still mayor's discretion.
So the amendment is to delete item 44?
J.
44?
43J.
43J. So I need a second for that.
Second.
Okay, we're now talking about the amendment only, 44, or 43J, eliminating that. Any discussion on that specific item? Yeah.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, it's, it's essentially what we're doing now, right? Just by choice, we've decided, you've decided as mayor not to read proclamations now, but you could, at your discretion, do so. So this just says, formalizes the not reading unless otherwise directed by the mayor. So functionally, it's the same thing, what the outcome is. Like, it's your discretion regardless, based upon this language or not including it at all.
Don't disagree.
I suppose the default is?
The default, the default here is not to read them. The other way it was, the default was to read them, so it's a matter of how we look at it.
So I'll, I'll put this on me. This was my comment that I believe that I made as far as formalizing a recent trend not to read.
We know.
Okay, all right, well, there you go. So the reason why is simple because our city council meeting is having to go in between 9:30 and 10 o'clock. Out of respect for our staff, the city, the citizens here and everything like that, I feel as though a proclamation can be posted, it can be, it is not in favor or against any particular holiday event or proclamation, everything. It's simply a project manager trying to save time on a meeting. So maybe a little bit insensitive in my reasoning behind it, but I have very much a read them all or read none a policy when it comes to proclamations. So I'm fine with either all of them or none of them, but I just think we should keep it consistent, whatever we decide to do. So if striking J allows us the leverage to be able to do that, I would just give recommendation to this council that we should keep consistent, at least with the current seven that are here, that if we're gonna read them, we're gonna read them all, or we're not gonna read any. So that's all I ask.
But that, I would offer that that goes against the current policy or the council rule that we have in place, because the council rule we have in place gives the mayor the discretion of whether or not we'll read them.
I, I understand that. I guess what I'm trying to do is remove the ambiguity, and hence why I was saying to leave it with, with the language out. I'm just saying, I'm fine with going with the, with the majority here and leaving that flexibility. I'm just warning, not warning, I'm sorry, wrong word, choice of word. I'm just saying advisory is that whatever decision we make, we can't go back and change it, at least with the same seven body of council members.
Well, so I guess I will, I will speak to that. I guess I don't necessarily agree completely with what you said. The mayor, whoever you elect as the mayor, decides, and the reason I did this was not to save time.
Right.
And my intent would be, at some point, when we move past some issues, that we begin to read all proclamations, but understand that when you submit a proclamation, I look at it, I have the power to change it. I do, I don't know that I've ever changed any, any of them, but I can.
I did.
Okay. But I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is this became a source of, of controversy, and so I wanted to move past that. We're still acknowledging the proclamations, and the process can change two meetings from now.
Understood.
But it just needs to be consistent, you know, I don't want to go back and forth, you know, depending on whose, whose proclamation it is.
Understood. I guess I'm just trying to move the source of controversy, I guess. But I'm fine with whatever.
Maybe conversations?
Yes, but we moved into the deliberations already. We asked for public comment, so.
Sometimes I think we should have those parts after you guys talk, so we know what we're talking about.
That's, yeah. Not the way our rules read.
Yeah, please, let's hear it right now.
So, so we have a motion and a second on the table for the 43J. Let's just vote that up or down. It, it sounds like it kind of says the same thing, one way or the other. It's just what the default is. We can either eliminate the line or leave it, it doesn't make any difference.
Then how do we vote?
If you want to take the line out, you take the line out, it still means.
Well, there's an amendment on that. There's an amendment.
Your amendment's on the block. So we're going.
Don't we vote on that first?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're voting.
So yours.
I misunderstood.
He asks us to remove it or no is to keep it.
J goes away. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, that passes five to two. Okay, so J's gone, but we're still doing the same thing.
Okay. Is this where I would propose a, a new J that would be related to all proclamations approved by the mayor would be posted on the city's website, or something to that effect? Is that appropriate here?
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, the method, I don't, I don't want to get into web design, but it should be a public-facing page that's easy to find, and you don't have to go through 16 layers.
Is that your motions?
Yeah.
You need to sign it for it.
Second.
Well, we're adding, we want to add language to the proposed language.
Okay, so there is a motion to add a new J that says that the city will post all approved proclamations on the city's website. Is that fair? Any discussion on that?
I just have a question of staff. Is, is there any problem with putting them on Facebook? Because that would get far more exposure in the community than putting them on the website would.
I would say, no, there's not a problem with that, but that's different than the motion, which is the website.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I would just say that my prefer, if we keep it on the city's website, I think it keeps it in one place. Chasing the popular social media app of the day, I don't think is in the city's best interest. Facebook will soon be gone at some point, be replaced by something else. I don't personally care because I don't use it, but people can see the, people can see the information if it's readily available on the public website.
Yeah.
No preference, no.
I don't disagree. I was just, I know that we used to put them on Facebook.
Yeah.
We're slowing down. So we're voting on the amendment to add the new J language, which is post the approved proclamations on the city website. All those in favor signify. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye. Opposed?
Upstake.
Okay, so that passes, so we got a new J. So we have an amended set of rules, just to make the attorney do something. So are we ready to vote up or down on those? So we have an amended set of city council rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye. Opposed?
Upstake.
Okay, we have, so again, item 9F will be placed on the July 21 agenda. We have a new item 9F, which is resolution 2025-18, which this is potential adoption of public participation plan for the 2026 comprehensive plan periodic update. Periodic update being this year or being the big one?
The big one.
The big one, okay. This is now page 220 in the packet.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Stacy Henderson, Planning Manager. I'm here tonight to present to you resolution 2025-18, adoption of the public participation plan for the 2026 comprehensive plan periodic update. Today's study session was a great informative presentation on what the comp plan is and why we have it and what the requirements are, et cetera, et cetera. This periodic update, as you all know, is a significant project. It's important that this updated comp plan accurately reflects our community goals moving into the future. In order to achieve this to the best of our ability, we've developed a robust public participation plan supporting continuous community outreach, which will be necessary throughout the process. This plan and process is an opportunity for our community to focus on common goals and visions. Staff presented the public participation plan to council at the September 2, 2024 study session for review and feedback. What you have in your packet today is largely similar to what was presented in September with a few changes to dates, and as Kirsten mentioned earlier, a few amendments that they found. This plan, it lists who are in, are the groups that we're looking to connect with. There is a long list provided in the plan of groups and organizations in our community. We want to be as extensive as needed, so I did want to mention that this list can be expanded as we're going through the process. Just because you don't see an organization on there today doesn't mean they can't be involved in the process, so I did want to highlight that. Then the plan that you have goes into how. How are we going to reach out to these groups and communicate with them? Again, this is an extensive list of how, but there is opportunity to change and expand as needed moving forward as well. Staff is, just to highlight a few things we've already started working on, staff is currently working with the consultant on project branding, and they're helping with, to prepare some print materials. And our city staff will provide a webpage for all things periodic update that people will be able to go to throughout the project. We plan to utilize public noticing, email communications, comment forums, social media. There will be additional opportunities to participate with focus groups, listening sessions, community workshops, and open houses. As mentioned, we are working on planning a big community kickoff open house as well with consultants and to let everyone know what this project's about. With the provided project timeline in your, in the plan, we demonstrate through three phases how we'll be continuing to involve the public throughout the process, including scoping, providing draft policies and plans for review, and through the final review and adoption phase. With this, staff recommends council move to adopt resolution 2025-18, adopting the public participation plan for the 2026 comprehensive plan periodic update. Thank you.
Council, questions of staff?
I just, likely to come in.
When we get to the, when we get to our vote, we'll make comments.
Okay.
Public comment.
I guess just one question of staff. If I missed it, I'll...
Nope, you're good.
I'll make it go away.
We're good.
So Stacy, thank you for the presentation. Is the, is it, is it correct, would it be correct to say that this public participation plan is fully reflected in our contract and scope of work with our consultant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been, yeah.
Okay.
We've been working with them, and they fully reviewed it, and we kind of went through what staff would do and what they could help us with.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions of staff? Public comment. The lights are, I can't see my IT guy very well. I think you said no.
No.
Okay. Council, so we need a motion on resolution 2025-18, and then we can talk.
Ms. Mayor, move to adopt resolution 2025-18, adopting the public participation plan for the 2026 comprehensive plan periodic update.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve resolution 2025-18, which is the public participation plan for the comprehensive plan periodic update 2026. Discussion. I agree.
I just wanted to comment that I'm glad to see the faith-based organizations in there, but KBMA is not the extension, it doesn't include all of the faith-based organizations. They have a stipulation on a certain belief system that essentially is Christian belief system, and there are a lot of churches who, like the Universal Unitarian Church and Quakers, and there are a number of other faith-based organizations that could be included in this besides just KBMA.
So are you suggesting a change in the plan?
Well, I think Stacy indicated that it could be changed. It just broadened, just broadened it would be.
Absolutely, yeah.
The recommendation.
And there's potential, you don't have to expand it tonight unless you want to, but yeah, there is flexibility to expand what we have from here. This is our, our plan, but we can, of course, do more than that.
Yeah. I trust you to...
Good to know.
To do that. I just want to put it on your radar script.
Yeah, thanks.
I had a similar comment related to the listing under transportation for Ellensburg Central Transit, just recognizing that ECT is both a city enterprise, but also we have a contractor, HopeSource. And I think, and we have, I just, it's important, and I know HopeSource is going to be at the table for other things as well, but I think it's important to not lose sight of the fact that among stakeholders, as a provider of services in the community, it's important I'm at the table, so. And I trust that can be, massage it if need be.
Okay, any further comments?
Just, just a comment that I should have pointed out during the presentation study session, that the 2017 comp plan had what won awards for the public participation that we did at that point under Kristen Zakets, Peterson leadership. So I think we're, it's, it's going to be a good, a good conversation among the community, so.
I think it's fabulous what you recommend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? So we have resolution 2025-18. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye. Opposed? That motion passes. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're moving on to item 10A, which is the fieldhouse discussion.
And then you have a monsoon right after.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing to hold the ground together.
Yeah, well, in a severe fire, the ground, the plants release a waxy substance. And it takes about three to five years for the UV to break down the wax. So the process is if you get an intense burn, it basically sterilizes it and floods for about five years before it even penetrates your bone.
About a minute left, we'll get started.
Yeah, yeah. It's really, it's kind of like the flash floods you get in the desert, you know, there's really no way to mitigate it, right?
Yep, it's the same thing, the only problem with the field country is that we got so much vegetation in there, it gives you a false sense of safety.
Yeah.
They get rain periodically, so you see Mike, some little increase in the rivers.
You know, I said there today.
Till you get this one here flooded.
Yeah, I think.
I just.
How did I do that?
Okay, we're restarting, this is item 10A, page 232 in the amended agenda, this is the fieldhouse discussion and absolutely opportunity for public comment.
All right. Can I have a full time like questions and then promises that I'm able to get up and then you guys reiterate and respond and then I get up again to raise this all back? Can I reestablish and rephrase my question? Can I have a good full time?
Let's kind of see how that goes, that feels counter to our normal process. So, so everybody understands public comment is meant for you guys to give us comment, it's not meant to necessarily. Yeah, so slightly different forum, but we'll try to accommodate.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council, Heidi Behr and Sternway City Manager. This is a conceptual discussion and it's bringing back the item for talking about the fieldhouse with some additional information. There's a bit of timeliness to this, we've been scrambling the last few months. And, and then the county actually released the lodging tax capital program and that application was due the first. And so I wanted to get to you an update to talk about this project as we move through, we did submit an application, I'll talk a little bit about that. And I did a collection of information in the staff report, it's pretty robust and there's a lot of background, I'm going to do a very simple overview. And talk about how we got to today and what I'm asking for today is your, if, what questions you might have, what timeline you're interested in, how you'd like to move forward with this. If there's conceptual approval for moving forward with this model, it'd be great to hear that so we can take this to the next step. So, just a little background about the fieldhouse and project and I see Parks Director Case is in the back of the room. So together we can answer some questions, give you a little background. In the, in 2022, obviously December of 2022, we were having a conversation throughout 2021 and 2022. Coming out of COVID, there was a community discussion about we need more recreation options for our kids. And there was this balance, this idea of having a fieldhouse, which was indoor courts and turf. And then there was another discussion about pools and community centers. And that those were, were being discussed about how we move forward, which one is first. And when the racket center burned down in December of 2022, council said, this is something that we need to replace. This is a huge loss for our community, it's really the only indoor sort of sports related, fitness related facility. And it's not in the greatest location, let's move it into town. So we worked with our insurance company essentially to settle the claim and we were able to get two prices. And one was the, the loss price essentially. And the, the second was about 1.8 million dollars more and that was for the replacement value. And what the insurance company said is if you're going to rebuild this, it's worth more. If you're not, then you know, this is what you get and you can move on. And we chose to look at options to try to rebuild that to be able to claim that 1.8 million and we had to demonstrate that we were moving forward. The deadline was a two-year period and so moving from December 2022 to 2024, we started working with, with, through a process to select a contractor to help us, to help us plan what that fieldhouse facility might be, what the potential costs were, what sort of programming that might happen. And so we spent some money, we had a contract with Helix. And the big question was, how much money do we have to build this facility? We weren't, we were, had pursued, sued some grants to help match some of our local funding, looked for partnerships with the county as well. And we were able to secure about $500,000, which we, is still an option for us, of federal dollars through the HUD, through the congressionally directed spending. And, and so that, that question, we were hoping to get about half of the amount through grants and that number has shrunk over time. And so we realized that that's not an open door and we might need to pursue other options. In the meantime, as we were looking at the conceptual design of the project, because we weren't sure about the funding sources or the total amount we would have for the project, it was suggested by, by our contractor to look at the progressive design build. So your, your traditional building style is you design a facility, you bid it out and then you build it. And that usually means you need essentially all the money or to be able to finance all of that upfront. And we weren't sure that we were ready to have that conversation about how much to finance. So we walked down the path of the progressive design build. The very first step in that progressive design build is to look at the actual cost. And that presentation came back to you in February of this year. And what we recognized is the facility that we want, we cannot afford. And the price tag for 150,000 square foot facility was upwards, up over 60,000, excuse me, 60 million dollars. And that was out of our price range. Our original estimates for this facility were about 10, 15 million and as we started doing our initial design work, they were in the mid twenties. And 60 was absolutely out of our range. So at the meeting in February, I believe, at the, the council said, is there another option? And so we have been looking into the opportunity for a public-private partnership. What we've heard is there are developers out there that say they can probably build this for much less. And there is a model, as we've done the research, there is a model in state's law and so it's RCW 3542. That allows cities to lease properties similar to what you would do with an airport. So you have a leasable parcel and a developer could build a facility and lease it back to the city. And there are steps involved in this process. The first step is to provide an equitable opportunities or request for qualifications. The city could provide parameters saying, we want this type of facility built with this amount of square footage, this type of courts, exterior parking improvements. You all propose to us what you think you can build it for and the lease terms and we could put parameters on those. And so there's a process that you, you seek to request proposals and then there's a contracting process and, and essentially that developer builds. And then once the facility is complete, they lease back and there could be a buyout clause for that. And so all of the numbers you have packed in here are to kind of trace down the, the reality and some of the assumptions that we would make looking at this model to see whether or not we can afford it. So one of the requests that council has had and when we talked to the county commissioners, they talked about, can the city afford to operate this thing? And one of the studies we had done was a Ballard King study looking at the operations and the cost and the potential for recapture. Typically, public facilities like this or parks generally don't pay for themselves and so there's a, a portion. And Ballard King estimated about 60% of the cost to, to operate essentially. So the expenditures that it would take in a year could probably be recovered through fees. And so the, the estimated cost according to the Ballard King study was about a million dollars, it was just a little lower than that. And about 60%, obviously with recapture could be about $600,000. Looking at the operations, that would be a $400,000 gap. And I would just offer, just again, conceptually, we're making some assumptions here. But right now in our Parks and Recreation budget, in our youth services, and so the youth program, master school program, that's about a $300,000 budget. We've been talking long-term about maybe that's an opportunity or service to transfer those services over to the Boys and Girls Club. And, and so for the city to move away from that service, that could be about $300,000 of that 400. And then our youth sports programs, their, their budget is about $100,000. So between those two and the recapture, that would, that could provide the operating, annual operating costs for a facility like this. When we look at the lease costs, it really depends on how the lease is structured. Obviously, the longer you stretch it out, the more you're going to pay in interest. And, and we know that right now in the bank, we have over $7 million from our insurance settlement. That was intended for a replacement facility for, for this. And so looking at if, you know, if you're going to spend money on a lease, it's like paying rent and you're not going to get something long-term. But with this structure, you could, you would have the ability to buy out at a certain point, however you structure that lease. And so we know that the lease costs, I think there are some estimations, if we look at a 15-year lease, whether it's a $14 million facility or a $15 million, that, that lease payment might be 1.3 million to a little over $2 million per year. But again, buyout, the other, the other concept we took into consideration was, do we have the money to purchase this facility back for the community? And what would that look like? And so we, there's some calculations in your staff report today that look at our cash on hand. And look at if we, if we receive the money for the capital grant through the lodge, the county's lodging tax, we requested 4 million. And looking at the other options, and I better follow my own numbers here, we would end up with, with about, if we were to use some of our own lodging tax dollars with about a $3 million gap, give or take. And so the, the short story is, it would take some new revenues in order to pay that debt service, we know, long-term. But, but also if we're purchasing back after a short lease period, that would be, that would be minimized potentially. And the amount might be that needed financing in the three to four million dollar range, yes, three to four million dollar range. And so lease payments on something like that would be significantly lower, lower than the full lease payment. So the other, the other information I have in the staff report now is really an accounting of our expenses to date. I think there's been some information out there, we had to sign agreements for the early work that we had done for planning and we stopped our first, first initial work. The idea was to take that to 30%. The consultants actually did some work, for instance, a traffic study, which we can use for this future work too. And so there's some work that's already been done that will help us with this. We know that there would likely be some off-site improvements for this and that would take some, some work to, it's a traffic impact fee intersection that we could potentially fund through other sources. And, and so there would be some additional work. So the, the short story is this public-private model that we're calling, it's by state law, it's a lease or leaseback. It, it looks like it is much more affordable than any of the other models we've looked at. It still would take some new revenue, but again, the 4 billion dollars financing that versus 60 million is a very, very big change. And so this could be an option to deliver this service to the community. Again, this has been the priority, our staff has been working on this for the last couple of years, for, you know, based on council direction. And so bringing this back to you, there are a couple of nuances here and that is the money that we received, that half a million dollars, isn't cash on hand. And that's, this, these are the federal dollars. We have the ability to reimburse some of our planning costs and right now, out of pocket, we've spent right around $700,000 on the early planning and design work and consultant work. And we have the ability to get reimbursed for a portion of that if we continue to move forward with this project. But we have to have a plan to move forward if we are able to recoup some of those costs. And so there's a little bit of risk of losing those dollars if we're not going to commit to moving forward in, in the near future. And so, so back to discussions, I know that's a lot, I did prepare slides today because I didn't have time. And, and our goal today is just to get the, the questions from council or direction from council about move forward. I know there's been a lot of talk about other, about the pool and about other, other recreation facilities. This is really, it's, it's again, it likely is a difficult issue because again, there are, we will always have priorities. So I guess I will stop there and I can answer questions because I'm sure there are things I missed.
Questions only.
Man, there's a lot in here. First, my thought goes straight to the operation and capital, capital costs. So Ballard King put together a kind of synopsis associated with the recreational expenditures and a potential index associated with it. What they outlined there is what the average spending potential index is. For those that are not seeing this, they basically are saying that for fees for participation sports may average to be about $116 versus a state of Washington average of $160. And so what they do and it's kind of targeting where Ellensburg might fit the model for that. My questions, concerns associated with that is, I understand the reasoning of trying to keep the fees low, especially if they are already higher than maybe what people are paying now. My concern is, we've done this before where we've made a short sighted decision to keep those fees a little bit low. And then we end up having to play catch-up and we don't want to get into the deferred maintenance game as far as fees not being able to take care of the building. So I, I, this is the double edged swords of trying to keep it affordable for the community, but not getting into what we're into right now. And that's not having enough deferred maintenance to take care of our capital investment. So I question that because of the deltas is a little bit wider than the state average. And so that's a question more for Ballard King, are they going to give us a re, another evaluation on this or is this kind of their recommendation?
We want to spend more money on it, they will come back happily, I'm sure.
I, I guess I would, I would follow up there, if we, if we get to the point where we have laid out a design and, you know, these are the amenities and these are the square foot, then we can probably do a cost analysis on the thing, so probably something we could do later, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
I had to form that in the word of a question.
Yeah. The fee structure is setting typically down the road, so yes, there are a lot of assumptions in this and, and that would be one of them.
I would almost ask, could they start with the average Washington State fees associated with other recreational fees? And work backwards on how much space we can afford? Because I don't want to go beyond what the rest of the state is paying. I understand that it might be counter conducive to maybe affordability. But again, I want to keep that balance of what makes sense, if been able to cover that. So can they also work backwards, is that an option for them?
I'm sure they can.
Good.
Yeah.
Questions?
I've got a question, just understanding the numbers. So the, the total revenue for purchase this is the 15.2 million? So then do we, that's, that's just the gross, right? So we'd have to opt, like what we're actually operating with, you'd have to offset by the 774,000?
So that, so that number is our, our method, our estimate to look at, can we cover, could we cover the capital cost for a purchase? And it's just capital only cost for a purchase and it's a very high level conceptual cost.
Yeah.
Yes.
But we, so we've, but we've spent the 775,000?
Correct, it, but we already, we still have, we've, we've done well, we've invested, our finance department is amazing. We've invested every spare piece of cash and so we've gotten a return on our, our investment. So, so right now our cash on hand is right around 7.2 million in that fund.
Okay. Okay.
My, my question is on, so we would put out an RFQ and, and it would be the kind that we don't have to take the low bid. It would be what, what are you proposing to us in terms of design and we choose the design we like?
It would be, it could be that, but we could create parameters for the type of facility and any specifications for the finance or limits in lease payments, things like that. So we actually could create a lot of the terms for the lease and the facility in the RFQ.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask a question. I think Delano's comments about being sure we can maintain and take care of the building are really important. It's my understanding and conversations that we have, we have had with the concept of, I think, Chamber even brought this to the table, that Ellensburg could become a sports center kind of thing to host tournaments and things for various and sundry sport things, especially in the summer. I assume there'll be a, a fee schedule for that too. So the, the point I'm trying to make is there is some additional revenue generating capacity with this facility that we've not had in the past. Is that a fair statement?
I think that's a fair statement. And the other advantage is, and this was how we framed our request to the county, to the county for their lodging tax grant, was that additional parking, right now we are constrained by parking at Rotary Park. An additional parking at Rotary Park with this facility would actually expand our ability to host tournaments and, and to really program the, the outdoor fields in addition to the indoor fields and this would require, this would add to again, winter time opportunity, recreation and fitness and sports opportunity.
Okay, then open it up for public comment.
Okay, so this is a lot of information, I guess my one, my one question when I'm reading through here. It was, it's down there on page 240, financial impact lease option for fieldhouse facility. There's off-site improvement, city, roundabout Anderson Road up Tanum. Is that something that we've already paid and if so, why didn't Winco have anything to do with that?
So traffic impact fees or traffic impact studies drive what improvements you have to put and if, if Winco doesn't trigger, they pay into the system and there's money sitting there, whoever triggers it has to pay in and make the.
Okay.
Intersection upgrades.
So even though they're the reason that the intersection upgrade has to happen?
They're very likely not the reason, but if, if they were, it would be put, it would have been required.
Okay.
If somebody online, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thanks. Good evening, City Council, my name is Katie Kelleher and I live in the county. I served on the Parks and Recreation Commission from September 2021 to May 2023. I'm here tonight to share serious concerns about the proposed fieldhouse project and the city's broader recreation priorities. After my experience on the commission, I decided to just build a park and place at, at my own home because that was the best option for my kids, given the state of the public playground options. This year, my family and I were turned away from the city pool twice due to staffing shortages. Additionally, swim lessons here fill up in minutes. And the entry level swimming lessons must be registered for in person at noon on a Monday. So I think we can assume that most in need are not receiving those entry level lessons. My family has made the decision to drive to Yakima every week and pay $25 per child for a one-hour private lesson at the Yakima Tennis Club so our kids know how to swim. I am fortunate to have this time, flexibility and the resources to make this work, but most families in Ellensburg don't. Right now, we are feeling the families who need access to safe, basic, life-saving recreation the most. We are feeling our most vulnerable population, our children. I just read the agenda packet today, so forgive me if I misinterpreted. But it appears the proposed fieldhouse project is projected to lose $383,000 per year in operations alone. And that number doesn't even include the debt service. So meanwhile, our playgrounds are over 20 years old, our community doesn't have tennis courts and our pool is understaffed and suffering from severe deferred maintenance. And now we're proposing a new fieldhouse without a clear plan for sustainable operations or equitable pricing. If we can't afford to run what we already have, how will we afford to run something this big? And so my ask is that we just pause and reflect. Let's fix what's broken first, let's invest in the pool or playgrounds and equitable recreation access that reflect the actual needs of our, of our community. Thank you.
Mr. Kelleher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pat Kelleher, 6530 Wilson Creek Road. My favorite oldest daughter and I, we only compared notes over tonight's picnic dinner. And I encourage her to, to make a statement. I urge the city to prioritize, prioritize planning for the future of the Ellensburg Community Pool over the proposed fieldhouse project. Drowning is the sixth leading cause of death among children and adolescents. Making access to swimming instruction. Making access to swimming instruction a public safety necessity. In contrast, no child has died from missing a three, free throw. And basketball hoops are already underutilized at the high school parking lot, so much that they remove the eight that were built with the high school new building. The community pool has 51,000 uses and over 1,100 swim lessons in 2024, making it the most used facility in the Parks Department. There's a high demand and insufficient availability for swim lessons, causing families to commute to Yakima for swim lessons. The pool is closed on Sundays, further limiting access. The future availability of the pool for both the local swim team and individuals with developmental needs is uncertain. A public record request revealed there is no existing plan for the future of the community pool. Meanwhile, the proposed Ellensburg Fieldhouse has a detailed 64-page plan with operational losses projected at over 368,000 in the first year excluding construction or leasing costs. The fieldhouse is not essential, whereas a community pool is critical. Potentially saving facility, especially in a region bordered by two rivers, major rivers. I request the city to develop a comprehensive plan for the pool before considering non-essential projects like the fieldhouse. I'd like to close with a little information from your 64-page study. Sports participation summary, number four, swimming. National activity trend in millions, swimming, 40, 49, 45 million, I think there's a percentage in there somewhere. And it increased from 2014 to 2024 by 10%. Swimming is life savings.
Mr. Keller, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I live in Kennesaw County. I am winging it for the first time, so yeah, it's a little bit scary, but this is important. I just want to agree with everything that you said. I worked as a 911 call receiver for eight and a half years in South King County. I have taken drowning calls myself and they're not pretty for anybody. Swimming is a life-saving skill. I would absolutely love to see the pool taken care of before, not that a fieldhouse wouldn't be great, because I think we all can agree that it would be fantastic, but we need to take care of what we have now. We need to make sure that we have a facility where kids can learn how to swim. I am there three days a week and I was watching swim lessons today. And that pool is so utilized. It's, it's amazing to see these kids learning how to swim. I'm excited for them, not only because it can save their life in the future, I know firsthand, I've had those calls, but they can learn how to have fun in an area where we have so much water around us and they can, and they can have fun safely. They don't have to be afraid of the water and they don't have to be embarrassed if they're adults and they don't know how to swim. And just today, I was reading what somebody had put up online about talking about pools. They said an indoor aquatic facility can not only offer life-saving swimming skills, but it can offer year-round lifeguarding, rescue scuba, paddle boarding, kayaking, training, diving, and so much more. I mean, there's no, there's no denying that. We have something really special in our community. Let's take care of it. And once we can do that, then maybe we can move on to something else like the fieldhouse, which yeah, would be fantastic. But, but we need to prioritize what we're, what we're doing. And I just couldn't agree more with you that the pool should, should come first before anything else. So anyways, thank you. That wasn't as bad as I thought it would be, winging it.
Anybody else? Okay.
So Adriana Besteschegdono, County, representing myself. I was this, today actually talking, and it was great to have the hospital here because they said they have, on the average 300, I called them today to see how many kids we've had born in the last couple of years. And they said their average is about 300 babies. They catch about 300 babies a year. So then I called the local midwife and she says this, this year she caught 150. And then I was looking at our church and we have had probably, that I can count on my hands, seven friends who've had babies outside of the county. So we're, I feel like we're in a boom. So, so you're, you definitely have a conundrum. There's fieldhouse, pool. If we can figure out how to do both, beautiful. But I do agree that it's teaching our community a lot when we teach them how to maintain what we have and how to prioritize and be proactive and not reactive. But I, we have a lot of kids coming up and that's really exciting. So we definitely have a lot to think about, but lots of babies.
Counsel.
Can I ask more questions?
Yeah, we have an executive session and a bunch of other stuff, but yes.
My understanding is August, first meeting in August, whatever that is, we're, we're doing a tour of the pool and its needs and with estimated costs and, I mean, probably not to the level of, I mean, I, just round numbers, what, what's it going to cost to, to keep, to keep it to the level that we can maintain it? I don't know, 10 years.
So the pool is nearly a 50-year-old facility. We're coming up on that. And so the intent is to do a study session on August 4th. And so it'll be our regular time at six o'clock. We'll meet at the pool. We'll do a little tour of that. And we're working on really building all of the maintenance that we've done over the years and how much we've invested in that. And then currently where we sit. And so we're gathering some information to share at that. And we'll walk so everybody can see the facility together and talk through your questions and then provide to the best of our ability, the estimated costs that to, to maintain and maybe to enhance some of the, the current status.
Go ahead.
And ideally, we would be making this decision with, at the end of the park planning process where we have had a lot of input about people's priorities, would it remind me the schedule for that?
So the goal is to finish the Parks, Recreation and Open Space Plan by March of next year. There's a Recreation and Conservation Office deadline for funding requests. And so we'll leave that plan ready to go by that time. Okay, thank you.
Quick question. Oh, go ahead.
Just real quickly, the, the 7 million that we received, at this point, it's 100% ours without any strings attached?
Yes, we did a settlement for that.
So just, just for throwing out a scenario, we could repurpose some of that to take care of the pool, take care of some of the other equipment that we have in the park system. So we do, a lot of what we have is just, it's run down. I'm looking at, do we build the shiny new, but it's going to cost us 400 grand a year, which means we're taking away from something else? Or do we fix what we have, which seems to be the biggest demand we're hearing?
Right. So to the best of my ability, I don't believe there are strings attached to that, but I would, we will actually do that research.
Get to get a look into that and let us know.
Yeah, I guess I was under the understanding, because we took the number that says we're going to replace it.
Yeah, that's what I was.
So I think there may be part of that money that's not ours if we don't replace the building.
Or whether the.
Racket Center. And, and I guess I would just like to, to point out, we're losing the fact that we had a recreation center and it's gone. It is something that existed in the community. And so, and we heard from, not 100, but we heard from dozens of impassioned people how there is a demand and a need for indoor speak, for old people, a place to walk where it's safe, where they're not on ice and those types of things. And so I, I think we need to be really careful about making one, you know, completely about, you know, people playing basketball and one about a life safety issue. I, I, I mean, I think that there is some legitimacy in those comparisons, but there is a portion of the population, a fairly large portion of the population, that doesn't swim and isn't interested in swimming and looks for other recreational activities and are traveling outside of the community to get those recreational activities. And so I think that we need to, I think these are two separate questions to the community. And the fact that CWU got out of the pool business because they were subsidizing the community to an extent was a decision that was long expected. I've been through the last iteration of us dumping millions of dollars into that pool building. Structurally, we've replaced a roof, we've replaced HVAC system and replaced mechanical systems. The building is 50 years old. We are probably not talking long-term about upgrading what is there. We are talking about rebuilding the pool. And if you want to see big numbers, that's a very big number. And if you want to see what a pool costs to run versus what it brings in in fees, the delta isn't $400,000 a year. And so I think we need, if we're going to be apples to apples here, you know, if you're talking about, you know, hey, this is going to cost us 400,000, you upgrade the pool facility and you upgrade the hours that's available to it and bring the revenue that you're going to get, because a lot of the participants in the pool receive significantly discounted access to the pool building. So we are talking about, you know, sort of dual tracks here. And I think that we need to be really careful about, you know, saying that one is more important than the other because, you know, 10 meetings ago or 20 meetings ago, we had a bunch of people in here telling us we had to build a community center or the recreational center, the racket recreational center. And we've pointed staff in the direction and said, hey, here's a way to get it at, to get a smaller facility at a significantly lower cost. And they've given us a plan. If we want to say we're not doing this, then, and we return whatever money we have to return and we go a different direction, but $7 million is not going to touch the pool. It's not. And counsel made a commitment at our last, you know, kumbaya planning session where we said, one of our priorities, strategic priorities was Parks and Recreation facilities and a stable funding mechanism. And so I think we need to stop having the question about how we allocate what we have because we need to fix the difference in this. And if we're going to take care of the facilities, everything to this point has been well-intentioned and they're trying to make things fit together. The maintenance staff for the pool, just ballpark figure, how many people you have working for you, full-time?
We have two full-time, one full-time dedicated to pool operations.
Okay, but total in the Parks Department? How many people work for you?
Thirty-one FTEs.
Thirty-one FTEs, but out all, over all of the recreation programs in all of the different facilities. So I just, again, this is not, this isn't necessarily an either or combination. This is not condemnation of, you know, how we got, we got where we got as a community. And people on this dais are partially responsible to it and the voters are responsible to it, with the feedback they've given us. And quite frankly, the county to this point has not participated meaningfully in a lot of recreational activity in terms of funding. They don't want a Parks District. There is a whole nother option available to us that may be considered in this county and that's a countywide Parks and Recreation District, but it involves taxes. And if we're serious about this, then you have to get out and advocate it. It's going to cost significantly more than you pay now for these access points. And it's not the city's responsibility to fix the county's recreation problem. It is the city's responsibility to look at what the people who live in the city ask us to do. And I think that if we can look at it more regionally with an effective partner and the county's given us every indication that they are willing to move in that direction, then I'm totally willing to look at these issues more regionally. But to this point, it has been the city and it has been all of the decisions we've collectively made, which have been, you know, well-intentioned. And quite frankly, this is the first outcry I've heard about the pool since the last time it closed because the roof was rotten and then all the connection points and all the windows had to be replaced. And then we found problems with the HVAC system and then we found problems with the mechanical systems. Those problems still exist. The roof is falling off. So we are not talking about throwing $7 million and fixing our problems. We're chasing good money or throwing bad, good money after bad. So I guess I woke up.
My, I mean, just to follow up on that, my job and, and right and duty up here is to ask the questions I want to ask. I want to explore scenarios. I want to listen and, and then ask the questions. If they make sense, they make sense. If they don't, they don't. But, I mean, I, I, I know you're very passionate about it, but that kind of was like a sit down and shut up moment.
No, it's not a sit down and shut up moment. The, the moment is that we got here collectively. And if we want to fix this, we need to fix this holistically and collectively. We cannot keep doing things with the, the current revenue stream and expect that this is going to get better. It's not. It's going to get worse. Things are going to get more expensive. Pools are the single most expensive entity that a, a city can have. It costs massive amounts of money and I actually know, because I have one. Hey? I know what it costs. It costs twice what I budgeted. So I, I, you know, I just, I want this to be a conversation that we actually meet what we said we were going to do. And that's a sustainable funding structure for parks. And then this conversation gets a lot easier because now we have a pool of money to draw from to fund the services that the community asks for. But we're trying to Band-Aid this thing together and it's not going to work. $7 million will not fix the problem. It will delay the decision and then we're going to be back in the, back in the place where we have to make the decisions again. So I, I get it. We want to fix the pool. The pool is still technically operating. The racket center got bundled up and sent to the recycler. And all of that recreational activity got lost. And we've heard from the public that they want it back and they want it in town. And we are talking, I mean, we have people in here that that's the only safe place for people to walk when there's ice on the sidewalks, for them to get in there and exercise. Well, broken hips kill people too.
Well, real quick question. Remind me, what is the financial risk as far as what dollars we would lose by not making a decision today? I think there was an aspect of this as far as.
You're not going to lose anybody by, by not making a decision today.
Okay.
There, there will be a time where our dollars for, our federal dollars need to go back if we're not going to move forward with this.
How much is that?
We're not, half a million dollars.
Half a million dollars. So this is becoming one of the biggest conversations in our community besides other stuff that we lovely talk about. I think this is one that we, we give with Parks and Rec because we're going to have an August conversation about this, not only on the, on a pool, but what are the priorities? Now, I say this as a, as a talking point. We would be at risk of giving the half a million dollars back to the federal government in order to try to make the best decision based upon everybody's feedback. The room is dispersed, there's not a lot of people here, so we want to get as many voices on the priorities of our community as far as recreation. Rich is right as far as the cost of a pool. You could drop $7 million in there and still probably add another five before you actually get it to a point where you don't have to worry about it. Just so you're, for, for a little while. He, he's, he's absolutely right as far as it being a Pandora's Box, especially in old building like that. A lot of those systems, I mean, at least for the university, some of those systems no longer exist and so you have to go with new components. So you're essentially rebuilding a pool. So if we're going to make that decision, I am thinking about the capital and operational costs. It would be absolutely far less cost, operational and capital for a fieldhouse versus a pool. But I understand the community draw associated with the pool, especially for all the factors that were brought here. I think this is an excellent opportunity to put before folks to be able to say, hey, we got $7 million, help us understand a priority. Here's a comparison of capital costs and operation costs for both of these. It's going to be pretty night and day when you see the both of them compared to each other. But if people have or informed of it, I think maybe the community will stand behind one or two, or one of those ideas over another. And so if it is the pool, because it is a higher cost, then so be it. But the community is going to have to step up for it. And to Rich's point, it probably is not just a city of Ellensburg solution. It's going to be much bigger than that. And so now you have to get other parties, party to play into this. And that cost as far as operation is going to be high, just being honest with folks out there. There are third-party options, but they're out there for an ROI. They have to make a profit. They're not doing it out of the goodness of their hearts, so.
Yeah, we're not getting approached by anybody in the private sector that wants to build us a pool and lease it back to us. There's a reason for that.
I'd like to make a comment. I want to, I want to reiterate the fact that we acted in good faith when we asked to go forward with the field. in good faith when we asked to go forward with the Fieldhouse. Staff has worked hard to bring us to this point. And we're actually at a point where we can visualize that this could happen for us. And it's a lot quicker than any of us thought. The pool is, definitely needs help. And we, we need a new pool. And we need to do things that we, whatever we can do with what we have at this point in time to, to get 10 more years out of that pool. I think we should do that. But I don't believe that we should go back on the priorities that we determined three years ago when the Fieldhouse burned down. So I would, I would move to instruct staff to move forward with this model and bring the costs and things back to us so that we could have a better idea of what we're looking at.
I'll, was that a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
So I would say that as part of this, from a long-term plan, I think we do have to look at what it looks like to do a phased approach for a replacement pool as part of that Fieldhouse community. And so wherever, I think deciding for the Fieldhouse makes sense because you have the option to be able to expand, to be able to put out a pool facility that actually encompasses the growth and the need and the demand that we have in our community as opposed to investing in a place that already doesn't have enough parking, doesn't have enough swimming capacity, especially if we're going to be growing as a community. So why keep it confined to that area? So I think that I'm in support of the Fieldhouse idea simply because I think the solution on a pool long-term will be a relocation, will be a new facility, unfortunately. And we're going to have to face that cost, whatever it is. But from a long-term perspective, I just know what Pandora's Box is in a deferred maintenance nightmare like our pool is. And I just, I could just see that thing sucking down water like a toy bowl. So.
Well, yeah.
So I, I guess I am interested in, in approving the motion. And if that's all we can do, that's fine. I guess I would also like to see rough estimates for what is it going to take to keep the pool operational and safe to use for a 10-year period? And then what are the projections? Because the last estimate that I heard was 35 million for the new pool. And that was a couple of years ago. And in 10 years, that's 50 million. And we have a similar, if not more, outlay coming for a sewer treatment plant. And so again, you know, as a community, we have to make decisions. And to this point, we have cut corners on, on the maintenance of our parks and recreation. And we've sort of gotten by with it. And we used to have a very different relationship with the schools and the schools don't have the same relationship. They used to be open facilities for the public. They don't do that anymore. And so recreational activities got significantly reduced. The college made a very sound business decision when they decided to close down their pool. Students aren't using it. They're a higher education facility. They're not here to provide a place for kids to swim, you know, I'm just being blunt. And so I would like to, to know what the, we need to start laying these things out as, as projects and identifying what that funding source and what level of, of cooperation and participation we have with other stakeholders in the community. Create a pathway and start funding these things. Otherwise, we're going to sit here and we'll have this conversation in five years about why we dump $6 million into the pool because something really big broke. The building is 50 years old. The life cycle on a pool building is not 50 years.
Could I, one question related to that. The park planning project that we approved recently to do a cap, a deep dive into capital improvement planning, essentially using the capital improvement program model for parks and rec. Wouldn't that also capture the life cycle cost of either a replacement pool or rehabilitating the pool we have if we wanted to? Would that be the proper vehicle for that?
Our goal was to look at priorities, community priorities, and have costs associated with those. And so we can look at maintaining, likely it would be a new facility they'd focus on. And because we can look at the maintenance costs, I think internally and what could...
Yeah, I guess my point was, this isn't something where we've completely ignored looking forward. So I think there's opportunities. The other thing I was going to say about pools, and I think you're exactly right. I can remember when the Great Recession hit, the city managed to hold, hold firm and with minimal impact on pool users, for example. I seem to remember the city of Wapato had a pool. They just had to close it. They could not open it. It was closed. I think it was closed for over a year. I'm not even sure they reopened it. May have been partly mechanical. Sunnyside was mentioned earlier. I saw not that long ago, a couple of months ago, they're struggling and they were looking at closing their pool. And I think whether it's a financial challenge or something very expensive breaks, I mean, there's a very real possibility we will have to close the pool. And it may never reopen until there's a replacement. So that, that, that could happen sort of out of our hands that way because the Band-Aids only stop the bleeding so, so much.
So the motion is to sort of direct staff to consider, to continue down the pathway. We're not committing to any money to the public-private partnership process with the Fieldhouse. That's the motion. And then you've gotten a lot of feedback about maybe broadening this to, to include pool maintenance and pool replacement.
Broadening this as in not the, the public-private partnership?
No.
But yes.
Well, if you can get the contractor to throw a pool in, great.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure no, because I talked to them.
I have an answer to that one.
Just have to shop around, find somebody who can build us a pool for $7 million and then we'll be all good, right?
Yeah, not going to happen. Trust me.
I get it.
So that's the motion. No, yeah. So that's the motion. Are you ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye opposed.
Abstaining. Abstain.
Okay. Managers' report, Reader's Digest version.
Okay, there is a lot in the report. I'm going to talk about a couple of things that are in the report. On the dais, and I emailed this out to council earlier today, is notice. And typically when we exceed due to unforeseen circumstances for emergency repairs, we needed to get a bid for the replacement of Whitney well pump. And so, and it was above my signing authority. So by city code, I, I am to present that to you all. We haven't spent the money yet, but to get a quote and get the work done and initiated. We know there are lead times in summertime. Having one of our backup wells, it's really important that everything is functional. And so making sure that we have some timely response on that. And the good news is, we think we'll have it fixed in the next couple of months, for sure. Let's see here. And as a reminder, that was mentioned earlier, August 4th, we're doing our study session at the pool. So regular time, we'll meet there. We have worked hard to find ways to talk about, to circle back when people will comment on things that are probably comment period. And so I do drop those into the managers' report. And so we did some research on the Craig's Hill issue and some other items that are part of this. One question I had for council was that we have an invitation to the community to host the 2026 Washington Main Street Places Conference. It'd be great to have council support to participate in that. The Downtown Association will likely be the lead on that. Chamber, businesses, other associations as well. Just a thumbs up would be great with your consent to participate in Main Street. They're not asking for money, just that, that we have the city's support.
Is anybody opposed?
Well, we are one, so we should be welcoming.
Absolutely. It'd be a great opportunity to show off our community. Unity Park construction resumes tomorrow and they're going to start pulling out concrete, that temporary concrete that was in place and reconfiguring so we can actually get the water feature up and going before the end of the month. And so stay tuned for that. There was an error in the, the managers' report. The Cold Weather Shelter, we actually had to reschedule that. And it is scheduled now for July, July 17th. And this is the Cold Weather Shelter meeting at the Fellowship Hall at Grace Church. And this is the location where we're considering leasing in partnership with the county, the site. They're asking for a two-year lease agreement. This would be on your next council meeting agenda. But we wanted to walk through the community. There's a requirement for a community meeting. Wanted to host that community meeting to make sure we're hearing the concerns. And we can structure agreements or anything around that and be responsive to the community members. So there are some really big posters in the back and I will make sure you have this and we'll help them, them send the notices out. And so trying to rush here. Let's see here. I think that's all I have for managers'.
Sarah, do you have anything that is...
All my meetings are this week.
Nancy?
No.
Nancy?
I wanted to ask for a legal review of Adrienne's recommendation for three restrooms. And is that, does that meet, would that meet law, state law requirements?
David?
No meetings to report, but I will say that I did participate, attend the Juneteenth celebration, which was notably a federal holiday, recognized by the city as, as appropriate. It was a very great event. Councilmember Ballmer did an excellent job, sort of standing up in front of the crowd, keeping everybody going. And I think it was great. I think, I think the community, I think really appreciated the fact that there was a, a strong representation from the city council. So thank you to everyone who attended.
Okay, affordable housing as for this Wednesday, Law and Justice, that is going to be next week that I'll be at. Steer I-90 will be on Thursday for me. KitCon will also be on Wednesday. Solid Waste will be next month for me along with Kitas Fish and Wildlife Basin later on. I would like to look at the legal precedent as far as citizen private funding like Candace talked about for projects. I want to find out what is that avenue? If there's a stream, if there's a risk associated with that, what does that look like?
For any, any particular project or just in general?
For any particular project or, or capital improvements? Basically, if the community wanted to privately fund or donate or something to, like a fundraiser to the city for a specific capital project, can it be done and what are legal parameters associated with that?
Same rules as we use for the rotary investments, I would assume, right?
Okay, so we'll get that for you.
Josh?
None.
I have nothing. We are going into executive session and we, do we anticipate any action afterwards?
We don't anticipate action afterwards and we would say 15 minutes.
Okay, legal, council representing agency matters, agency enforcement. It's RCW 4231101. I, 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 litigation we're talking about. It's in the packet.
Yes.
Seriously.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
We got done early, just to give you three minutes back. I said, she really wants her three minutes back. Okay. We are adjourned, there's four of us.